Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 7th, and the time is 1:00 P. M. Has the front lobby been cleared? We're good? Yes? Yes, okay. Thank you. We are here today for our school board briefing today. Welcome, everyone. Does the superintendent have any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have six items today. Per board protocol, each board member should strive for four minutes for initial comment, two minutes for follow-up, and a total of 10 minutes overall for our comments. Let's proceed to our first item. Our first item is number one, Strategic Plan Refresh Kickoff.
As we have discussed, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity and to introduce our speaker. Just want to take the opportunity to recognize all of the work that's gone into our current strategic plan and to share with all of you sort of what we're looking at today. The representatives of Education Elements are here today to present on my behalf, looking at a way to look at our strategic plan moving forward for a refresh. This by no means is an attempt to rewrite the entire process, but with three additional board members joining us, a COVID pandemic having come through our great state, a hurricane now moving, having moved through, we think it's wise for us to take some time this spring in engagement, not just with the board, but with the community as well, to talk about what the critical pathway is forward, looking at our strategic plan, looking at our mottos and goals, but also really looking at what is the critical work, really taking a focus on what is it that you would want this superintendent and potentially an elected superintendent to be laser-like focused on regarding student achievement and both student achievement and operational issues. This is a plan that we have devised together with myself and Dr. Savage, and we wanted to bring it forward to you. We've had one-on-one conversations with all of you, but we wanted to bring it forward for our community to hear and for you to see what our best thinking is right now about how we could move forward to accomplish that process of refreshing the strategic plan, otherwise known as InVision 2030. Turn it over.
Thank you, sir. First, I just want to say good afternoon to Vice Chair Fisher, Chairman Parsons, esteemed board members, and Superintendent Bernier and General Counsel. It's a privilege to be here with you today and to begin the process of refreshing the strategic plan. My name is Justin DeLeone. I work with a company called Education Elements, and we support schools and districts across the country with strategic plans designed, refreshing those plans, and different strategic initiatives. I've supported personally a number of these projects in districts, large and small, from the largest in the country to small rural districts, and through that work, we very much make it a priority to think about how we engage in that process. We know that having a final document at the end to communicate what the critical path is, as Dr. Bernier mentioned, is very important, but it's just as important to think about the steps that we take to get there. What do I mean by that? So first, aligning very clearly on what the work is and what the objectives are, making sure that supporting the work, there's a clear governance structure in place, and we're respecting and honoring the governance in place for decision-making and how decisions about focus areas, priorities, objectives are made. We also need to make sure, and my team and I need to be mindful, that we're involving many voices and we're building on the understanding of what different constituents across the community in this school district need and believe need to happen to further the education of all students in the community. And from there, leading us into the work, there will be some facilitated retreats, which I'll speak a little bit more about later, to help us take a step back and reflect on, at a broad level, what's the vision for the district and where are we going? As Dr. Bernier mentioned, I know that there's new board members. Many of the conditions have changed, what the needs of students are and families and staff members, and so taking time to step back and think about where are we heading? Why are we heading in this direction? How are we going to know when we get there? So, a little bit of framing. I think it's helpful for us just to get on the same page of what are we trying to do and what are we not necessarily trying to do through this project? You'll see the term "refreshing" in the top left here in the "is" column. We're not building from scratch. We know that there's a strategic plan that's in place now. A lot of thought and energy went into making that plan, and we know that there's a lot of good thinking and direction in there, and so how do we step back and think critically about it, and how do we make adjustments? How do we make sure that we're prioritizing the work that's most important for the families and students and staff across Lee County? And how do we make sure that the strategic direction is clear? And by that, I mean mission, vision, and values, guiding all of the work and informing the decision-making that will take place around priorities and metrics. Going back to the idea of how we approach our work through the strategic planning process or refresh process, one of the fundamental aspects of the work is having feedback. So what does that look like? Part of that is evolving, and so as we're kicking off the work and I'm starting to better understand the needs and conditions from each of you and from others across the community, that's going to inform what that will look like. But for example, I know that there is a district advisory council and a board advisory council. So for example, as draft objectives are being formed or focus areas, making sure that in draft mode, those are being shared for feedback, if that feels appropriate to the board, getting some critical feedback on those to inform decision-making during retreats, bringing that feedback back to you, and really using that as a jumping-off point to inform your decision-making and design that critical path forward. A little bit about what I see our role as and what Dr. Bernier and Dr. Savage have helped me to understand is most important in this process is really for Education Elements and myself to act as a guide. I'm certainly going to take time, and our team will take time, to understand what's most important to you and the people that you listen to and you represent. Our job is really to facilitate the process, synthesize what we learn from different groups of people, and do our best to help surface themes, and do our best to facilitate decision-making and help us understand the different ideas that are coming to the table and different needs, and then use a mix of different methods to engage you in thinking about and reflecting on these needs and coming forward together. So that looks like facilitating internal and external meetings. So by internal, I mean all the logistics, preparing for the retreats, and then as well as facilitating the retreats onsite, coming back with a colleague of mine. It's also providing some targeted support, so we know that there's going to be in-person engagements, but there's much work that needs to happen in between those engagements as well. So how are we setting up our decision-making protocols? Does everybody feel clear and comfortable on those, previewing the work at our retreats? And finally, making sure that along the way, we're summarizing our findings, making it easy for you and accessible for you to know exactly where we are in the process, what's going on, so it's easy for you to communicate about to those that you represent. Returning to the idea of engaging the community. So that's going to happen in a few different ways, and as a matter of fact, I'm aware of the accreditation process that's going on now. While that input gathering is focused on accreditation, of course, we also know that part of that is understanding directionally what are the broader needs in the district and that many voices are being heard and listened to through that process. So we think that there are some efficiencies that can be had through leveraging that data. In addition to that, other data available in the district, for example, culture and climate surveys, or different student or staff-facing surveys, we will bring into the process, and again, synthesize that and bring those to our retreats. We are in the process right now of scheduling one-on-one interviews with each of you and members of the district leadership as well, again, as an initial view into and needs gathering into what are the top needs and priorities in the district. And as I mentioned before, we'll continue to create feedback loops from different members of the community, each of you, so that everybody feels clear on the refresh plan as it's advancing. When we're talking about a strategic plan, just to define our terms and level set on what the work is and what aspects of a strategic plan we're going to refresh, this is what I'm talking about. And really, it's the top three or four levels that we're going to get into, right? Through this refresh process, we're not going to get into specific initiatives and specific projects and tactics. We are getting into what is our North Star? What will we hold true along our journey, our beliefs essentially? And then where do we need to focus our attention? And how can we really prioritize and go very deeply into the focus areas that we think will meet the needs of all members of the community and all of its students and advance the district forward? So put another way, this is a different view, really, and what's in the orange box there is what we'll focus on through this refresh process. Again, through the different types of engagement, leveraging that accreditation input data that we'll have access to, academic data, surveys, all this will help us to inform these categories at the top of the slide. And so through the retreats, we're really going to break it up into two is the plan now, but we can adapt along the way of first focusing on strategic direction, so mission, vision, and values, which will be informed in part by some of the data that we collect upfront, and then as we arrive at the second retreat, that's where we'll shift gears, getting into the priority and objectives levels. And just on a more tactical level, our roadmap, breaking down some of the high-level milestones and deliverables, and when we plan to engage in each of them, beginning with our kickoff today, of course. As I mentioned, we're in the process of scheduling the interviews. We're also work on putting together a survey just to get an initial pulse of where board members' thinking is and what's top of mind for you, so that we can be better prepared for each of the interviews as well. And then that will lead into each of the two board retreats, one scheduled in April, the second in May, and then the goal, of course, is to have the refreshed plan and have that document available. When exactly that will be in June, and that readout to be determined, but we know we're aiming for a June timeline. So I hope that gives you a better sense of the refresh process, how Education Elements and I think about approaching this work. And again, I can't stress enough, centering listening and centering that synthesis and making sure that my job is really to do as much as we can to hear from and learn from as many people, and that can look like leveraging a lot of what the district already knows and has gathered, but bringing that into the process. So again, I appreciate being here today. Yes, sir. Any questions I can answer? Or Dr. Bernier?
So members of the board, thank you, Dr. DeLeone. I appreciate this opportunity to delve into the refresh of the strategic plan. If I could ask the person driving to go back to slide number eight. I think this is a really valuable picture for us. Certainly, we want to look at our vision and mission, but I do believe that everybody at this dais has been very supportive of that district and mission, but maybe we need to tweak, maybe we want to make a shift, maybe we want to spend some time really talking about what does world-class mean, all right? What is that? How do we define that as a group? Then specifically look at our values, but this is also a place for listen-up, speak-up, climate and culture to come back into the conversation regarding some strategic, potentially some strategic initiatives about how we go about truly planning to adjust the culture of a school district and ensuring that things are aligned. I do appreciate, Justin, as you presented, the work on the next slide, slide number nine. You'll notice you're circled in a yellow box. Please understand those initiatives and actions still get done. That gets done a little differently. While we're working on vision, mission, values, priority, and you set the objectives for student achievement, human resources, transportation, those types of things, what we do from those objectives, we work on the initiatives, what we're going to do in each year to try to reach those, and probably one of the most important things are the metrics. What I really want to bring back to you is a strategic plan that's very clear to me and to my staff and to this community as to how we're going to be measured. My specific evaluation instrument speaks to the strategic plan and the movement against those goals. So I have a very vested interest in bringing forth a strategic plan that's not only clear to all of you, clear to me, but then I can articulate it with my staff to make sure they're aligned, so the whole organization, if you will. We've all seen the chart paper where the arrows go in all different directions. The key with a strategic plan is it allows us to align those arrows, and I guess in this particular case, I'm going to align them moving upward, because most of our metrics want to see go up, but we want to align those metrics and make sure the entire organization is focused in that same similar direction. So we look forward to some discussion. I know we've received, and I've not had a chance to update everybody, there's been some changes in some schedules that received prior to this presentation being uploaded. I will look at some of those retreat dates and ensure, if we can, to make those, all the board members available for those particular events. So just wanted to make sure that you had an idea of where we would like to go, and this is the time, if you want us to make adjustments and changes to that direction, this would be the time to get it so that we can proceed and really wrap this up as we get into the early summer. So we're prepared to release this to our principals and to our staffs and to our community so they know where the goals and objectives are headed over the next five years.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Do we have any board member comments or questions? Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I noticed the dates that you had on here, both of those dates are dates that we have workshops and action board meetings. That's number one, because the first thing I looked at, and so of course, the schedule is from 8:30 to 4:00, tentatively held, and that would just not work with what our schedule is at this point in time.
We worked with the board office and with my staff in order to, instead of creating another set of meetings, to work with those workshop dates, and this would be our work on those dates. That was our, that's why we're proposing, they would replace that workshop, because this would be the opportunity for us to do this work during that period of time.
Thank you. And then the second thing would be, on the one slide, it says, "Community is engaged, feedback, and design." Then there is high buy-in, which I think is really important that we have that, and I know all of a sudden our new words are, sorry, they're not my new word yet, so I have to listen-up, speak-up. So if we're listening up and speaking up, we need to make sure that we are listening to what the community is saying and asking, so that way that they will have the buy-in. So we can't just say listen-up, speak-up if we're not really listening to what they're saying, and that goes with staff and everyone else as well. So if we're going to use those words, we need to make sure that we are buying in on that as well, and we are following up on that. But the presentation, I love it, and I am looking forward to refreshing it. So thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the reminder and the push that we really listen, and I'm asking each of you to help me to do that through this process, and let's continue to come back to that, please.
Any other board questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. DeLeone, for your presentation. I appreciate it. So looking forward to this refresh.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you to the board, and Dr. Bernier. Appreciate it. Take care.
Moving on to item two, job descriptions with Director Dotig. Also, just want to remind you to anyone in the audience that will be speaking for public comment on any of the issues we're talking about, public comment will not come until the end after we've made all these presentations. Thank you.
Members of the board, Mr. Chair, these are minor changes in the multimedia communications for the coordinator, as well as bringing back the coordinator for government relations. I do want to remind the board that the coordinator for government relations is not currently an advertised position or planning to be advertised. We've talked about waiting for session to end, to see who is available, who has this particular skill set. The critical component of this job description came with the request of the board members to remove a past experience in education from this particular job description. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dotig, who will walk you through these particular changes, and I know you always want to ask me, so I'm going to say it upfront. I do not have people in mind for these positions. We are not creating positions for people. We are making some adjustments in our strategic outlook to, it's somewhere down the line, enhance our government relations process so that we can work, continue to work with a consultant, but that we'd still have somebody available to us that was our staff embedded in Tallahassee, so they could be making daily phone calls to us and keeping us updated. Rob?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, board. This is, I'm here today to brief two essentially new job descriptions. One is a returning job description, as Dr. Bernier stated. That is the coordinator government relations position. Previously, the board asked for a change to the minimum qualifications and the preferred qualifications, and that change has been made, as is indicated. And then the multimedia comms position is being presented to the board for the first time. Both of these positions, as Dr. Bernier said, would be in the communications department. So I'm here to answer any questions or deal with any comments you might have.
Board members, do we have any questions or comments on these job descriptions? Anything from the superintendent?
No, sir.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Parsons.
I just want to say, the government relations position, those changes is what we asked for, and I just want to thank you. I think that's well within the parameters now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. You actually stole what I was just about to say, so thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, the changes here, I am good with, and I don't see any other issues. I guess if there's anything, we can bring it up outside of this, one-on-one. Thank you, Mr. Dotig. I appreciate it. Next up on the agenda is item number three, adult career and technical education. Director Davis.
Mr. Chair, as they take their seats, we've asked, I asked this group to come up with an update regarding career, technical, and adult education. I think it's important for us to stay in tune with what's transpiring in both career and technical education as well as adult ed. This is another one of those opportunities for us to view these programs at a higher level, and at the end of the presentation, take your direction regarding what you'd like to see a deeper dive with, where you'd like to have some additional information, and maybe even looking at some of the metrics and some of the data that this team will present. I am going to turn it over to Rita Davis in just a second, but I'd be remiss, and I know Rita wants to make a comment as well, the adult ed, career and technical ed family took a huge loss in the last week with the loss of one of their employees, and I know that there's some memorial services scheduled for the 13th in the afternoon, so if, but I'll turn it over to Rita to talk a little bit more about who this employee is and was, and Dr. Davis, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Superintendent, board members, board attorney, and my colleagues. My name is Rita Davis. I'm the director for adult and career education, and I am here with my colleagues, Senior Director Todd Everly, Director Charlie Peace, and Director John Rozell, as we are grateful for the opportunity to share an update with you about career and technical education and adult education in our district. And thank you, Dr. Bernier, for allowing me the time to be off script. Just very briefly, Jeremy Bailey, a career and technical education teacher on assignment, who was with the district for almost eight years, passed away suddenly last week, and we will be celebrating his life Monday afternoon at Lakes Park from 2:00 to 6:00 P. M., if you would like to join us. So thank you. In today's presentation, we are going to walk you through the continuum of career and technical education at the school district of Lee County, and I'd like to start off first, I'll bring you through CTE, which is the abbreviation, so you'll hear that a lot, from elementary, middle, to high school. I will also talk about adult education, and then I will pass off to my colleagues, beginning with Senior Director Everly, to take you into an update on our technical colleges. So we start with elementary this afternoon, and our main purpose at the elementary level is to begin to get our students excited about what careers may be available for them. Hopefully, they will stay around in our beautiful community. And the number one tool we use for that is our excellent Career Exploration Lab bus. That is called the Excel Bus, and it's pictured for you there. And we also have one of our fifth grade students, Drew, her interpretation of the bus, and it contains learning, hands-on learning, career kiosks, and virtual reality within the bus, so the students go on the bus, so the students go on, they go, half of the students are in their classroom, and they take a very basic career aptitude survey to kind of see what buckets of interest exist for them. Very non-committal and fun, age-appropriate, while the other half of the students go onto the bus, and they can use Oculus virtual reality, they can be a nurse in an emergency room and see what that is like. So we have several different sponsors that help us make this bus available to every fifth grade student in Lee County. Our dentist station is by Portofino Dental, our healthcare station, Lee Health, law enforcement is by the Lee County Sheriff's Office, our construction kiosk is Lee BIA, that's the Building Industry Association in Lee County, and my shower door sponsored the manufacturing kiosk. So there's some data up there for you now. Twelve hundred and thirty-six of our students have experienced the bus, fifth graders, and we have nine more schools scheduled for this year. And we had two of our team members step up and offer to get their CDLs, and that is Kelly Thawley and Jeremy Bailey. And so we have a thank you note that I want to read to you from one of the fifth graders. "Thank you for coming, dear Kelly and Jeremy, thank you for coming today. I had a lot of fun doing careers. I like being a dentist because you can pull out teeth and get paid a lot of money to do it. I don't think being a doctor is something I want to work at when I get older, but I'm happy I got to experience different careers. Thank you, Kelly and Jeremy, sincerely, Valencia." And she drew a wonderful picture of the human mouth and some instruments. So that's our, that's our, our main focus in elementary is just to get students excited about career and tech ed. Before I move into middle school, I want to briefly speak with you about enrollment and outcomes. Obviously, we are a data-driven district, and so it's very important to make sure that our programs are having impact with our students. As you can see, with the exception of the post, the first post-COVID year, we have been expanding enrollment in grades six through twelve in career and technical education. I also want to speak to you about the difference between a digital tool certificate and an industry certification. I've given you a very brief definition on the right, but digital tool certificates are written from a fifth to eighth grade level. They are developmentally appropriate, and they get our middle school students excited about what could be available to them in high school. So we are very happy to have those opportunities for our students in middle school, and it takes them from that initial exploration in grade five, and now they're taking courses, and they can actually be awarded this digital tool certificate. So that also is a social-emotional learning component to help get them excited about CTE. Our industry certifications are either national or global standards. These are not district-written tests. So our students who are achieving these industry certifications could be increasing their earning power, they could be earning college credits, all from within their CTE courses. Now we move into the middle school portion of career and technical education. On the left side, you will see a matrix of the opportunities we offer. We use this as a marketing tool for parents and students, and we also use it as a guide to help our middle schools offer courses and these digital tool certificates in what we call mock academies. So you'll see things like future business owners, computer science guru, creative leaders, and the humanitarian. Not every middle school is going to offer every mock academy. They may pick one or two that is appropriate for their students, and they can jump around within those. A student does not need to complete all three courses. It just makes it a nice way to kind of lay out what's available in middle school. And we also have, we show there the high school alignment, so they can already start to plan for which career academies they want to participate in, in high school. And on the right, five hundred and ninety-two digital tool certificates have already been earned this year by our middle school students. And those cover everything from word processing, cybersecurity, introduction to gaming, and also how to be a good cyber citizen. So it teaches them some safety online. And then I just put some quotes there for you from middle school students to show how much they value these digital tool certificates. We have briefed you many times on our high school academies, and we're so grateful for your participation and always being a part of our events. So you know our high school academies very well. What you may not know is about seven years ago, we really began to strategically partner with Career Source of Southwest Florida and look at our demand occupation lists and our workforce needs for guiding implementing new programs. So several times we'll be asked by the community, "How do you start a new program?" Of course, we, we want a skilled teacher in the room, so that's a high need. We want a school that's going to support it, but we also want a workforce that needs students trained in that specific area. We have fifty-plus career and tech ed programs throughout our high schools, and those programs consist of more than one class. CTE is no longer an elective in the sense that it's just one class you take. We are actually more required, in a wonderful way, to have our students complete two, three, four courses to make it a CTE program, so they're getting the most in-depth knowledge. Marketing Essentials is a new course that we're offering, and I just wanted to show the extensiveness of that enrollment, and that is a cross-departmental implementation with our friends in curriculum, so that we're able to provide curriculum across Marketing Essentials for all, any high school student. It helps to meet their online course requirement, and it may lead to an industry certification called Entrepreneurship and Small Business, which the skills associated with that certification are transferable to many industries. Our students love digital design, any of our health academies, and they absolutely love our culinary arts programs. And from our community, high demand and high interest is related to our veterinary assisting programs, our award-winning pharmacy tech program, and our carpentry program. And then although there are so many wonderful success stories throughout our high school programs, we do want to mention, this is our first time ever Masonry One certified student at South Fort Myers High School, and his name is Gaspar, and he's there with his teacher, Mr. Myers. And this week, we just had our second certified student. So we now have another one, and his name is Marcus. And I just wanted to show you the difference of the value that an industry certification can bring to a student's life. This twenty-seven thirty per hour is based on, it's called NCCR, they're the certifying agency for base employment with their certification. And that fourteen-twenty-six, this is based on 2020's numbers, so before we went into a fifteen-dollar minimum wage, but the fourteen-twenty-six was entry level for that same job. So you can see, it's a national, the twenty-seven thirty, it's state fourteen-twenty-six, but you can see there is a difference in earning power with these certifications. Behind the enrollment and outcomes are the people, partners, and programs that drive everything we do. My team is here today, you'll see them in the back, they're part of the people, there's some of the pictures of them over the years that help drive what we do, both in career and tech ed and adult education. We have so many partners, and we are so grateful for the number of partners in our community that it would take multiple slides to list them all. From Florida Restaurant and Lodging Association, to the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools, to Lee Health, and the Suncoast Credit Union Foundation, we have been gifted so much time and equipment and dollars to support our programs. A few years ago, we created an initiative called Career Advisory Boards, one at each high school, with the purpose of having our community and business members weigh in on the academies at each high school. Is this academy working for your needs? And how can you serve our students and give them real-world experience, maybe a work-based learning, or just get to know our students more? Across the district, we have two hundred and eight members in our career advisory boards, and we also have a central district career advisory board with thirty-seven members. And every quarter, we invite those folks in to see, to visit a different high school and meet with our students and see the different academies. We have so many extra programs in career and tech ed. The middle column is just a few, and our goal is not just to have students learning in the classroom, not just to have them earning industry certifications, but also interacting with our community and business members using the skills and applying the skills that they're learning in the classroom. So everything from Train to Gain, which is a construction after-school program, Digital Lee, which is a digital design awards competition, and then now we also, with our eighth-grade students in junior achievement, are going to have a full-day career expo. And I also want to say thank you to, we have two hundred and thirty-seven full-time middle and high school CTE teachers covering that thirty thousand-plus enrollment, and our adult education department has eighty-six part-time teachers and support staff. And now I'll move into adult education. We have four categories of offering in adult education. GED, which allows folks to achieve their high school diploma, eight in-person locations throughout the district, and one online site that is quite robust, and we offer morning and evening classes to adults in our communities. Right now, we have three hundred and thirteen students enrolled in our GED program, and last year, we had a hundred and ninety-three graduates. We also have a very strong and expanding English for speakers of other languages program for adults, and as you can see, our current enrollment is fourteen hundred and sixty-four adult students. A third category in adult education is lifelong learning, and these are our affordable community offerings. These are enrichment learning. We had seventeen class offerings this most recent session, two hundred and fifty students, and the top course selections were ukulele, conversational Spanish, watercolor painting, Microsoft Office, and conversational English. And then the fourth area in adult education that we're super excited about, a grant we received from the Lee County Economic Development Office through John Talmadge and his team that we call Upskill Village, and this is a micro-credentialing program for adults in Lee County in the area of essential skills. And they go through this training in oral communication, empathy, and/or initiative, and they're issued a digital badge, which enhances their resume. I just want to briefly drill down into a couple specifics related to adult education that I think apply to the work that you are focused on. We have a program called Individualized Education and Training, and this is concurrent learning for our GED and ESOL students. So they do not have to delay their earning power while they're in their GED or ESOL classes. They can be getting a pre-health training, which leads into possibly getting, going into CNA at one of our tech colleges, and also possibly being hired by Lee Health. And a new exciting IET program we just started is pre-education. So where you are working to fill ed paras into teaching positions, we are working to take our adult students from GED and ESOL classes and get them an opportunity to be an ed para. So where, we hope to backfill that pipeline as you bring more teachers into our classrooms. We also have a family literacy program, which is sponsored by Future Makers, which allows monolingual parents to learn English as their pre-K students do. And then a business-sponsored ESOL class, Goodwill Industries of Southwest Florida, reached out to us and wanted to offer an English class for their employees, and so we work in partnership with them. And at this time, I would like to pass it over to Senior Director Everly.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Before we start, I do want to just recognize Director Davis. We have a great partnership with her programs. It's obvious our goal is to produce young men and women to go in the workforce for Lee County and all Southwest Florida, so I just wanted to recognize that. So as we talk about the Lee Technical Colleges, currently, we have three campuses. We are accredited through the Council of Occupational Education, which is CO. Last year, Cape Coral Technical College went through the five-year reaccreditation, and they were, they were successful. Currently, this year, Fort Myers Technical College, and since the Public Safety Academy is an extension of Fort Myers Technical College, we are currently going through our five-year reaccreditation this year. So what is our theme? And that is career in a year or less. And what does that mean? Is that we're a clock-hour program. So if a program is six hundred hours long, you must spend six hundred hours in the program. It's very time-consuming for a lot of these men and women that are coming in, but almost every one of our programs, you can get a certificate if they're field of study within a year or less. Just some recent highlights. We were ranked second in Florida in post-secondary industry certifications. Last year, we received five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in state performance funds. That's only second to Broward County, and it's been like that for the past three years. Also, the governor awarded to expand and strengthen programs. Several months ago, the governor came to, Matt LaChe, awarded several state colleges around and technical colleges. Both Fort Myers Technical College, Cape Coral Technical College, received one point one seven three million dollars. And what does that do for us? Is we're able to open up a diesel maintenance technician program at Fort Myers Technical College, a computer numerical control production specialist, which is CNC, at Fort Myers Technical College, and a practical nursing SIM lab, and that's just the strength of the current program at Cape Coral Technical College. Nursing program recognition and pipeline incentive, that's a statutory award. There were twenty-seven technical colleges around the state that were awarded funds from the state. We, the Lee Technical College was the third highest overall, only behind Broward and Miami-Dade. Also, Lee County Industry Development Authority Award. We've been working with them through the Future Makers Coalition since September of last year, and they gave us a grant for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that is really to target recruitment, enrollment, retain, and place skilled workers back in Lee County. They are Lee County oversight to make sure that we are placing people back in Lee County. Now I'd like to turn it over to Director Peace and let him talk about all the exciting things that are happening at Cape Coral Technical College.
All right, thank you, Todd. Good afternoon, everyone. Charlie Peace, Director of Cape Coral Technical College. I'd like to start by sharing with you all a little bit about our past at Cape Coral Tech, and then I'll share with, share with you where we are today. Back in the early nineties, the land at Cape Coral Technical College was actually donated by a local philanthropist with the intention of creating a vocational or technical center, what we now call a technical college, that was rebranded over the past several years across the state. We have fourteen acres or so. The school opened in nineteen ninety-three with a handful of programs, including LPN, mostly medical-related programs. And what you see up there on the screen is a picture of our property. At the bottom right-hand side of the property there, that's where the Hector Cafarada Temporary Portable Campus currently sits. So you can see an old bus loop there at the, at the far right-hand side of the screen, and then a basketball court that they're currently utilizing, which works out very well for them. And I want to give a shout-out, I see, I see Dr. Kurtz out in the, in the audience here. We have an awesome partnership with them. We had their first graders out yesterday to tour our barbering and cosmetology salon, as well as our dental assisting lab, and our electronic technology laboratory for their career week. So thank you, Dr. Kurtz, for the great partnership and working really well while, while that temporary campus is on our site. At the top of the screen there, what you see is the current Hector Cafarada campus, so just to orient you with what you're looking at there, or the, the previous Hector Cafarada campus, if you will, is that property at the top. The school has gone through multiple name changes. So if you grew up here like me, you probably remember it as High Tech Center North, and then a few years later, a few years back, probably around 2012 or so, I think it became Cape Coral Institute of Technology. At the same time, Fort Myers Tech became Fort Myers Institute of Technology. And we are now, as I mentioned, Cape Coral Technical College, which is a rebranding across the entire state of Florida. There are forty-five technical colleges in the state of Florida that are statutorily operated by local school districts for the public technical colleges. Where do we stand presently? So we currently are the only college in the city of Cape Coral. We provide a very important service to our community when it comes to workforce development education. We currently have sixteen programs. You can see the buckets down there at the bottom. I mentioned, Todd mentioned some of the successes with our healthcare programs. I do want to give a shout-out to our practical nursing program. Depending on which of the two top ranking agencies you look at, we are currently either the number one we are currently either the number-one or number-two ranked LPN or Practical Nursing Program in the entire state of Florida at Cape Coral Technical College. And it's been like that consistently for the past few years. We have other healthcare-related programs at Cape Tech. Medical assisting, dental assisting, optometric assisting, CNA, Certified Nursing Assistant, medical coding and billing. So we tend to be more white-collar. We don't quite have the blue-collar programs at the moment that Fort Myers Technical College has. But our programs are very successful, and we do a great service for our community. The rest of them there are pretty self-explanatory. In the technology bucket, we offer programs such as digital and graphic design, as well as electronic technology, I mentioned before. And then Network Systems Administration or Network Support, which is more the plumbing of the internet, but it's still on the white-collar side rather than the blue-collar. The rest are self-explanatory there. Veterinary assisting is incredibly popular. It's a seven-month-long program, 750 clock-hours. We fill 20 to 24 seats every seven months, right when we start open enrollment, within one day or two days. So there is a huge need, and we are the only public veterinary assisting program in the county right now. The next slide has to do with our accountability. How are we held accountable? So we are accredited, Todd mentioned, by the Council on Occupational Education, which accredits technical colleges and vocational schools across the country, and almost every technical college that I'm aware of in the state of Florida. We say CPL. That's something that we say to our staff often. Every teacher, every staff member at my campus, and John's campus, and Todd's campus in the post-secondary technical college world know what CPL means when we say it, because it stands for completion, placement, and licensure. We are held accountable every year with an annual report that requires a lot of rigorous data collection and making sure that we're reporting accurately to the Council on Occupational Education. Their basic benchmarks are 60%, 70%, 70% to maintain accreditation, and we clear those hurdles pretty well if you take a look at the data. If you look at the first column there, over the past couple of years, our completion rate across all programs at Cape Coral Technical College has hovered around the 83, 84% mark. I would say 1% is within the margin of error. The COVID year is at the bottom there, so we did have a little bit of a dip there because of COVID for obvious reasons. Substudents chose for personal reasons to move on and not come back and complete the program once we were able to get back in session. Couple other things I want to point out related to completion. So our students leave with no debt. We do not offer loans. We have a financial aid office that consults with our students on FAFSA. They make sure that they optimize their federal financial aid, whether it's Pell Grants, the state grant option, scholarship options, partnership options that we have with Career Source of Southwest Florida, and other organizations, including Future Makers. So our programs range from about $3,000 to $7,000 all-in, very affordable. And our students can either afford it, or we help them make sure that they cover their costs, and they leave the program with zero debt. That's really important when it comes to post-secondary education in today's world. The other thing related to completion that I wanted to point out has to do with the national completion rate average for four-year colleges. So obviously, four-year college is a very important part of our society. However, typically, on average, depending on what source you look at, only about 62% of students who enter a four-year college actually complete within six years. So we far exceed those metrics, and we're very proud of that 83, 84% range that we tend to hit consistently. In the second column there, placement. So this is a subset, just to orient you, this is a subset of the completers, right? So the denominator becomes the completer. So at Cape Coral Tech, given the space and capacity that we currently have, we're able to complete about 300 students per year. Of those students, 91% in the most reading, reporting, in the most recent reporting year, were placed in-field. And in-field is very important, because we have to track that. We have a career specialist, we have an entire team. And we're given six to nine months before we submit our final report to make sure we have rigorous data and documentation, so that when we get audited by the Council on Occupational Education, as we just went through at Cape Coral Tech the last couple of years, that we can demonstrate that those students were placed in-field. At the bottom there, you can see 92% during the COVID year. I think that can be explained by the fact that the 74% who maintained completion had a reason for staying, and they wanted to get the job. So we didn't see a lot of, much of a dip in the placement there. So we are very, very proud of our placement rate, and it's very important that we place students in-field. And just another tidbit, when you look at the data, depending on the source you look at, for students who go to traditional colleges, anywhere between 25 and 50% is where the metric, where the mark is for students who actually have a job related to their major, right? So it's very important what we do. Our mission at Cape Coral Technical College starts with to prepare students for employment. And then there's some other stuff there. The last column that you see there is licensure. So again, this is a subset of the programs that require a state licensure. So examples of programs that require a state licensure might be Practical Nursing, LPN, CNA, Certified Nursing Assistant, Barbering, Cosmetology, those sorts of programs. Of the students who complete those programs, this past year, we had 100% who passed the state licensure exam within that six to nine months. So we are incredibly proud of that. And again, you can see the consistency there. It is always that high, and it's really important for what we do. I want to share with you a little bit of information related to our business partner and industry engagement. Mr. Rozell, the Director of Fort Myers Tech, will expand upon what we do in terms of externships and internships and co-op and that sort of thing when he speaks about Fort Myers Tech. But an overview of how we engage. Rita mentioned the industry committees that support the K-12 side. At the post-secondary side, we are required, it is part of our accreditation, to make sure that we have, and we are engaging with constantly, our institutional advisory committee. So that is the terminology with Council on Occupational Education. You might think of it as School Advisory Council. And for us, it's very important that we talk about our strategic plan. I just had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about the revamp. I saw the presentation earlier, revamp of our current strategic plan from 2020 to 25. What are our metrics? Where are we at? How do we want to change our objectives and so on? That is the type of thing we talk about. We get into the roadmap, the meat and potatoes of what it is that we do, and what the vision is, and how we're going to get there. I'm very proud of the fact that we have a nice cross-section. We have about 10 members on our School Advisor, Institutional Advisory Council. You can see up on the screen, current program-related, Lee Health. We have representatives from Lee Health. We also have I2 Visual. We also have, Rita mentioned, partnership with Career Source of Southwest Florida. They are on our campus. Almost every Wednesday, we provide them with an office so they can meet with our students and provide those resources. And I do have someone from Career Source of Southwest Florida on my institutional advisory committee to help us gauge which programs are needed and what, which direction we should be headed. We also have a great partnership with Future Makers. So we have someone from Future Makers on our board. And we also have board members related in the construction industry, and someone from Nortech. Henrik Margart from Nortech is on our board as we look to the future and we think about where we're at, and where do we want to be, and where do we need to be. I mentioned, so the bottom of that slide there, you can see that the technical requirements, we far exceed them. We currently have 67 committee members on our occupational advisory committees. So those are, the OAC, our Occupational Advisory Committee, is the name of the program-specific committees. Those are required to meet at least twice per year, and they meet to talk about equipment needs. They look at, industry experts look at, what are we using in the labs? We're very proud of the fact that we have modern equipment. Curriculum requirements, what do they need? What can we enrich our curriculum with? Because it's not always just about hitting those objectives. Sometimes they need something extra. And also, how we can get those students into the jobs with our partners that are with us related to specific programs. And lastly, for me, I want to share an overview quickly of community service and engagement. This is very important with what we do. We want to make sure that we're out in the community and that our students are learning valuable lessons and engaging with the community at large. Our barbering, cosmetology, dental assisting, veterinary assisting, and others, I try to challenge every single program to engage in the community with community service projects at least once per year. But I want to highlight a couple here. Cosmetology just recently did the Tim Tebow Night to Shine, which is their annual, the Tim Tebow Foundation Night to Shine Event, which is their annual prom-like event for students with special needs. So we're very proud of their participation on a Friday night. They were there for several hours doing all the hair and makeup at different stations and so on. Also, our barbering program is out in the community every single Wednesday. She takes half of her class, she has two cohorts, and they go out to veterans' locations like American Legion, Hearts and Homes for Veterans, and they provide free services. They were recently on a Saturday, they spent their entire Saturday at the Homeless Coalition's Saturday event, and they stayed there until every last person got a shave and a haircut, whatever it was that they needed. And we received a very nice note as a thank you for their service there. And then other things, we do free dental services. We partner with dental, with dentists in the community. We don't do the free dental services on our campus, because we're not allowed without a dentist there. But we go out into the community and do different services at the beach and other areas. With that, I would like to hand it over to Director John Rozell for Fort Myers Technical College.
Good afternoon, Dr. Bernier, board members. I am John Rozell, Director of Fort Myers Technical College. I'm going to share a little bit with you today, following the very similar format that Mr. P. just laid out for you. We won't have to go in as deep, because he pretty covered it pretty thoroughly, but I want to give you our numbers and where we're at. So in 1967, Fort Myers Technical College opened up 30 acres, four buildings, and seven programs. We did have licensed practical nursing in the area at that time. It was one of the signature programs, and it still remains today. Like Cape Coral, we went under a number of name changes. If you have been in Fort Myers any length of time, you know as the Vocational Tech Center, Fort Myers Institution of Technology, and now Fort Myers Technical College. And then in 2001, the campus underwent a renovation, a $10 million renovation to reflect industry shifts and workforce demands. So what are we currently doing at Fort Myers Technical College? Right now, we have grown to 24 programs. We are under another major remodel, which we are very excited to have. It's been a lot of work, but it's going to be very beneficial to our community. I'm excited to open that up very soon and invite you out to tour the campus when it does open. Our areas of focus are healthcare, construction, transportation, manufacturing, hospitality, and human services. Like Director P. said, we have kind of more of the blue-collar programs from welding to carpentry to plumbing, HVAC. Very proud of our turbine generator maintenance program. It's one of the only public programs in the southeast of the United States. So we kind of got that niche, and we want to keep it. But those are some of the things we do, along with all the health science programs as well. So shortly after Hurricane Ian, Governor DeSantis awarded Fort Myers Technical College just under $1 million. We allocated that money to help start the diesel maintenance program and the CNC program that Mr. Everly talked to you about in the beginning. You can see those programs there on the left-hand side. So we're excited to be working through that process right now. We're currently doing all the applications and the grant work to get those up and running. We hope to have them going here in the near future. The other programs you see on the right are programs that we are always monitoring and eyeing. As some programs fall off, these are what we have identified as local needs. If we can fit them in and trade them out from other programs, or if we have space come available, we would like to look at these programs to insert them in there. Like Mr. P. said, we are also held to our annual reporting. These are some of our statistics and numbers. I won't walk you through the same thing he said. I think you kind of get the gist of it. But you can see our completion, placement, and licensure all does very, very well, even though we are in blue-collar programs and things that are typically, you know, not so easy to fill sometimes. So our, some of our industry and community engagement pieces that we do on both of our campuses, really, and Mr. P. talked about the co-op programs and externs and internships. Currently, what we do is when a student's in the last half of their program, or not half, I'd just say last probably quarter of their program, they have an opportunity to meet with employers to see if they can actually get into the job field a little bit earlier. This is what we call it a win-win-win, meaning that the employer gets to hire somebody that's filled a vacancy. The student gets to enter the job force and make a living wage, and then the school gets a placement. So we went all the way around. Those are some of the things we do with community engagement. We have our institutional advisory committees. Again, that puts in the strategic input, so we know where we're going with the school at any given time. They meet twice a year. It's kind of a living document that we can adjust if we need to make sure we're meeting the needs of the community. Our occupational advisory committees, we have 91 committee members, a part of that, and they're across all 24 of our programs. They meet twice a year, too, to help update us on what the industry is needing immediately, what kind of new equipment and things like that we should be training our students on, and things of that nature. And then lastly, career fairs. We do a lot of career fairs and presentations to get our students placed. So what we found out here recently is, on our career fairs, we used to have a mass career fair where a lot of employers would come in. We have now done it more focused, so where we just bring in a particular industry. For instance, healthcare students will only talk to healthcare employers. That allows them to be more marketable and kind of, and kind of the employer can really kind of get intimate conversation with those, to those students, so to see who fits best in that program or the best hire for them. We do the same thing in construction. We'll bring in plumbing, electricity, carpentry, and they, those employers will be able to talk to those students specifically, because one may be in carpentry, but hey, I really need somebody in electric right now. So it's really worked out really well, and it's really given our students a better opportunity to get out there. And with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Everly for the Public Service Academy update.
All right, thanks, John. As we finish the last campus, this is obviously something near to dear to my heart, is the Southwest Florida Public Service Academy. Give you a little bit of an overview, is that we're the only Florida Department of Law Enforcement Academy in all five counties. That's Lee, Charlotte, Henry, Glades, and Collier County. We're also the only full-time basic recruit fire academy and EMT academy in Southwest Florida. And we are open all year round. Other than the major holidays, we're open all through the summer to keep up with the demand for public safety. We currently sit on, it used to be Michigan Elementary School and then Michigan Monastery. We're down the street from Fort Myers Technical College, and it's approximately 20 acres, and there's 13 buildings within there. Give you a little snapshot up there. That next slide gives you the core programs that we offer. Give you just a little bit of the impact on how many recruits and public safety that we are producing for Southwest Florida. For the law enforcement programs that we offer, we are producing about 280 law enforcement officers throughout Southwest Florida for the agencies. For corrections, and the corrections crossover is about 240 per year. And for our fire, we do two fire programs, and there's producing about 48 firefighters. And for EMT, we're producing about 90 EMTs working for either our ambulance services or our hospitals. Something I wanted to point down there on the bottom right, which is equivalency of training. And what that is, that is officers coming from somewhere else in the United States. There was a huge draw the last two or three years from officers leaving the Big East. We're getting California now, where there was a lot of incidences. Governments were not, maybe it's not supporting law enforcement, and they're coming to Florida. The Governor has been awarding funds for officers coming from other states and getting certified in the state of Florida. Those were selection centers. We got into the business because of the demand was so high here. There was only three selection centers in the state of Florida, and we ended up being the fourth, after talking to Florida Department of Law Enforcement on that. The average age used to be about three, four years ago, they were retiring. They were people who were not willing to give up yet to serve their communities. So we were seeing them in their late 40s, early 50s. The average age for the past year, and we had well over 100 equivalency of training officers come to state and pass the licensure exam, that has to do certain training with us, is about the late 20s and early 30s. So the agencies are really eating these officers up, getting them on the field as our communities are growing. And as Charlie did here, not to go over that, I just wanted to show a little bit of the, our completion, placement, and licensure, and you have a well-rounded understanding of what that is. Usually with the completion, and you can see it's in the high 80s and low 90s, and of course, you had the one-year, the bottom for the COVID. Is that we're a semi-military organization in how we're set up, if you haven't been out there. It's a little bit of a shock value for our firefighters coming in, EMT and our law enforcement. And if we lose people in the beginning, it's because usually that first quarter, they were not ready for, or had a full understanding of what that commitment was going to be in public safety. You'll see our licensure is extremely high, if we can keep them. And then placement is extremely high as well. They're going right into the workforce for somewhere in Southwest Florida. Just to talk about a little bit of a profile, and what does that all mean for us? Our Criminal Justice Academy side, we're the fifth largest out of 42 academies in the state of Florida now. We service 24 law enforcement agencies throughout Southwest Florida. We also do all the advanced and specialized training for our veteran officers through the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. Last year, we did about 80 short-course programs, anywhere from 40 to 80 hours apiece. It's incentive funds for them, for the keep-up their CEUs and so on. We roughly had well over 1,300 veteran officers come through our doors to keep up their credentials. For fire and EMT, we service fire, 28 fire departments throughout Southwest Florida. Something that we're a little excited about, and it's in this growing. And we try to maintain as much as we can, but we have a great partnership with Ida Baker and South Fort Myers and East Lee County with a Fire One program. They end up selecting 24 high school seniors between the three of them. They have to meet a certain, there's certain requirements, an age limit has to be at a certain time because of requirements by the state of Florida. certain time because of requirements by the state of Florida. There's also some background screening and so on that's required. But once those 24 are identified, they come out to the academy. They spend their senior year with us, and when they graduate, if they successfully complete this program, they complete their Fire One program. And what that is equivalency to is, in the state of Florida, you could be a volunteer fireman right out the gate. To be a full firefighter, you have to have Fire One, Fire Two, and if you're going to be hired in the state of Florida, or especially in southwest Florida, you have to have your EMT program, which we offer all that. They're targeting, and we're trying to target those who really want to become firefighters or EMT. So we guarantee them, when they graduate high school, that they will be enrolled into the next Fire Two class or the next EMT class, so they can complete everything here at that $2.92 a clock hour and go into the workforce. Before I turn it over to Superintendent for the last of the comments, also want to mention that we're the only academy in the state of Florida that has all of these programs under one leadership in one building. It's very unique. When I go up and sit with the other 41 directors, they have only the law enforcement side. And then I have to sit there, and we get audited each year from Florida Department of Law Enforcement. I'm very lucky, I get audited four times a year. I also have the Department of Health once a year, Bureau of Fire Standards, and then of course, the school district. So we have, we're very proud of what we do, and we're maintaining and keeping our chiefs and sheriffs and fire chiefs and our EMS and hospitals happy with what we're able to produce. So with Superintendent, sir?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I believe this has been a fairly comprehensive Superintendent's presentation regarding career and technical education as well as adult ed. I turn it over to you for your discussion at this time.
Any board comment or questions? Mr. Persons?
Just looking at all the programs you offer, I'm not seeing too much toward the future such as electrical vehicle maintenance, solars, anything like that. Is that in the plans anytime soon, or?
Members of staff?
Yes.
Yes, thank you for that question. Currently under the remodel, we're going to have a lab that is coming available, remodeled in our AST program, which is auto service. And I was fortunate enough to hire an instructor a couple, about a few months ago, that has all of that electrical background, which was extremely lucky because they're making so much money in field. And he just wanted to come back and give back. So we're going to take that new lab and we're going to dedicate it to hybrid electricity in our AST program. As far as solar, I'm always looking to add solar as much as anywhere I can. When that space comes available, that is another program that we would definitely jump on.
Thank you. I have one other question. And way back, way back, way back, when I was in junior high, we had a program called SHOP. The main thing was, it was mandatory. But it taught me how to do electrical, I wired several things over my years, and so far, the house has not burned down. Metalworking, and just the basics. And the women all had to do homemaking, which my wife wished I had taken, because I don't cook, I don't sew, et cetera. But anyway, are any of these programs in the junior high or high school mandatory for at least one year or something like that? Or is it all just electives?
At this time, it's been my belief that we are solely on elective process. There's nothing mandatory, but the course options are out there for every student to choose from.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. Outstanding presentation. Thank you very, very much. I love it when you guys come in front of us. You've given me this information before, but I learn something new every time you come. And your depth of knowledge and how tightly you have your arms wrapped around your area of expertise impresses me every time. Thank you for being here. I have some questions, if we can go through some slides. Slide five, please. The other thing I want to do is thank your staff for being here. You guys are obviously the reason why they can come in front of us and wow us, because you're doing the work every day. So thank you. Slide five, there was some enrollment and completion and certification information there that I didn't really understand. So are you saying, oh, okay, I'm seeing it more clearly now. If I could see a breakout of the nine through 12 enrollments as compared to the nine through 12 certifications, that would be a little bit clearer for me, because we're not really comparing, we're not comparing the enrollment to the certifications. Am I making sense in my question? It appears as if we have this massive enrollment and a very low number of certifications, but I don't think that's the case. So if I could see those numbers, that would be great. And then across the board, you showed us a lot of numbers for each of the technical colleges, but they only went back three years. To include this slide, could we go back five and 10 years? Because it feels like we're looking at information kind of in a vacuum, because we only have two real years. One of the years was COVID, that doesn't count. And so I can't, I can't see any progress or problems, which I don't think there are any, but I can't see progress in just two years of data. Am I making sense?
I'll have to get back with staff to see how much further we can go back. I believe five years is definitely doable. 10 years becomes more problematic, but I'll get with staff and we'll get as much of the past history that we can put together that's accurate.
Great. Board update is perfect for that, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. Slide nine, please. You don't even have to move it. Do we have anything online for our lifelong learners? Or do they have to show up in person to learn conversational Spanish, for example?
Dr. Bernier, may I answer? We currently don't, we were piloting during the pandemic initially, an online program for conversational Spanish, but right now, just with our funds and capabilities, they're in person.
Okay. And then dual enrollment for high schoolers. How does that work at the technical colleges, please?
So depending on the nature of the program, certain programs are, we're able to offer dual enrollment, and certain ones, we are not. Fort Myers Tech tends to have more general offerings in the blue collar skilled trades, but at Cape Coral Technical College, for example, medical assisting, and it also depends on calendar alignment, right? So it's very hard to, for the counselors at the K-12 side to try to dual enroll someone in veterinary assisting, which is a seven-month program, because that program may start in a one-off date, because of the 12-month calendar. It might start in October. So it depends on the program, but at Cape Coral Tech, we have medical assisting. We're getting ready to offer optometric assisting, which works with eye doctors for the first time as dual enrollment. We do offer CNA, so we've actually seen an uptick in our dual enrollment in the evening program that we have for our certified nursing assistant, which has been nice. And we have a few other programs, electronic technology, that's been very successful with dual enrollment, but eventually, we would like to increase that. And we looked for an opportunity this year, as I mentioned, with optometric assisting, can we add programs? It also depends on age requirements, the governing body that oversees. So for example, it's very hard to dual enroll certain nursing-related programs, depending on their age requirements and licensure and things like that. If John wants to expand on anything that they do.
Yeah, we do have a number, actually, our dual enrollment number is up this year, so we're really pleased about that. But most of our programs are dual-enroll accessible, except for the ones that are obviously license licensures are not on a local demand or state list. Sometimes that has a limiting effect. But I will share, and then we brought this up, I will share this, that we did open enrollment yesterday, and my mission specialist is telling me, over half of our students are graduating from K-12 and coming into the technical colleges. So we're really excited about that.
So is it, can juniors dual enroll, or is it just seniors?
Juniors could dual enroll, mainly it's seniors, because of the academic requirements, they have to be so, because it's a full-time commitment when you're at the technical college. So that means there may be some online classes, of core classes, that they would have to take outside of being at the technical college. So it's, juniors can do it, but mainly our main focus is the seniors.
Great. Mr. Chair, I have two left. Would you like me to continue or wait?
Briefly, if you can.
Okay, great. So slide 28. Mr. Everly, are these people that you're training, do they stay in southwest Florida? Or can they apply to go work for Broward Sheriff's Department, for example?
Yeah. These certifications are statewide.
Right.
So they could go anywhere. What happens is for our law enforcement and correction basic recruit, 98% to 99% of them are already hired by the agencies, they're sponsoring.
Great.
We do have several that are not. We always keep those doors open, but by the time that they graduate, they're already picked up.
Perfect. Okay. And then my final question is, how do we compete with places like Tulsa Welding School or Universal Technical Institute? The reason why I ask the question, I'm wearing my parent hat now. My son comes home from school all excited to go to the Tulsa Welding School that costs $35,000 for a six-month program, when they could get the same program, he could get the same program at Fort Myers Tech, which is where I'm trying to push him. But Tulsa comes into the school and says, oh, we could place you in a job where you're making $980 million a year, and you could work for this company that has a sexy name and whatever. So my question is, how are we competing with them? Are we putting any thought to, how can we better attract local kids to not go away to places that are really expensive and make parents?
I'm going to let that team talk about their marketing strategy, but a couple of important points for the community, and I love that your parent hat is on. One of the things I love about our technical colleges, they're for kids, not for profit. I think that is a market differentiator between what our career and technical education programs and our technical colleges do. They're not, they're not, they're a not-for-profit university, and sometimes students can get the same exact thing, so to the parents and to the community whose children are making choices related to some of the universities, please get out and compare the product. You'll find that many of the things that both Mr. Pies and Mr. Rozell are doing, you could pay a lot of money for, or you could join our programs and really move forward. And I love how they talk about career in a year, doesn't always work quite out that way, but there's a real drive. So you're starting to hear career in a year, you're starting to hear for kids, not for profit. Those are some of the market differentiators that, as we talk and continue to try to expand the marketing of these programs, those are some phrases that we hope will join the vocabulary of our community. But I'll let them speak specifically to how they're attempting to compete with a better product against some of our other institutions of learning.
And Board Member Patrico on that, I think as part of that grant, we are putting a huge emphasis on marketing. That $150,000 award we just received is really about getting the names out there. We sell ourselves very easily, because we're governed by the state of Florida, how much we can charge. And we are at the max, $2.92 a clock hour. There is nowhere any private institution or anyone else can compete with the cost of what we give the same certification with, and our completions and licensures. That placement rates are up there, is huge. They are getting jobs. So those who are coming through, they're getting up in the high 90s, they're getting placed somewhere in the state of Florida. Some of these are national, you know, accredited, I'm sorry, not accreditation, but a national licensures, that they can go anywhere and do it. So it's about us getting our name out, and I'll let Charlie and John, if they have anything to add to that.
One other thing we do is, we do a lot of bus visits from high schools. We bring the students into the schools to do tours. Our mission specialists also go to the schools. We've made a big push here lately to try to get the message out, because it really is, it's really about the affordability that we can offer for the same thing that they could get at a private institution. And my welding students walk out with the same certifications and the same credentials and get hired just as quickly. So I think it is messaging and marketing, and we are actively working to increase that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're running low on time. I know Ms. Jordan was next.
Yeah, well, thank you. I was just going to say, I really, really appreciate this. I've been to multiple advisory committees, we bring in everyone there, and everybody is really listening to what is being stated as far as what the needs are. So I really appreciate that you all do that. And then just knowing from K to 12, we get all these little mines going, and then we move them on to the next. And as far as welding, welding is great, because my granddaughter graduated from welding academy at 19, is making quite a bit of money. So it's, and is debt-free, so I really appreciate that. And my other question, the train to gain program, great, because as soon as these kids get out, they're offered jobs, they sign on the dot. And a lot of those kids who come from that, which I thought was pretty amazing, was the fact that they are actually helping to support their families, and it's really like tear-jerking. But so I just have to say thank you for everything. It gives us choices as parents, grandparents, families, and just thank you for the great job all of you, all of you do. Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Thank you. I'll try to be quick. Couple things. So the masonry program, I was at the city council meeting last night, and they mentioned about the expansion. Some people from the district were there, talking about the expansion to some other schools. Can you elaborate on that, Dr. Davis?
Thank you.
I think you're under that, right? Do you know what I'm talking about?
May I speak on that, Dr. Bernier? So what you're referencing, Ms. Juvenelli, is what Ms. Jordan was speaking to, it's our train to gain program. So these are one of our, this is how we do our enhancement, our extension learning. This is not a required program. This is something we formed with the city of Fort Myers and the Southwest Florida Enterprise Center, above and beyond what we're required to do in the classroom. And we really started targeting in year one, who are our seniors who have shared with their counselors or career specialists, I have no idea what I'm going to do when I graduate. So we targeted those students first. They got really a boot camp-style overview training of everything from roofing to painting to drywalling, and then they were offered full-time employment upon completion. We started with Dunbar High School, just because they were in walking proximity of the Southwest Florida Enterprise Center. And then the second year, we also had Dunbar High School, and now this year, we're going to be expanding, including Fort Myers High School, East Lee County High School, Lee High Senior High School, and also Dunbar High School. Again, asking those students, if you're unsure, give these construction trades a try. And the folks you're speaking of, those are some of our partners, Phyllis Callaway, Dan Croker, Skanksa, they all are helping support just this one program. So they're kind of a small example of all these other extension programs that exist beyond our CTE classrooms.
Thank you. I thought that was really important, because I love the fact that it was expanding, and I didn't even know a whole lot about it. So I thought this was a perfect opportunity for other people to hear about it as well. One of the things that I keep, and on the skirt of the hurricane, you know, I throw back out, you know, you've heard me talk about it, is the lineman program. I still think that somehow we need to have that in our community, because I think that the need is great. And obviously, we've experienced that a few times over the past few years. So I'll say it again, because I think that partnering with FPNL and LCEC would be an opportunity for our local students to really have a great career. So I'll just, and Mr., I mean, Mr. Persons, I had to take SHOP and HOMAC, I just wanted to tell you that, and I really didn't like either one, for the record, but my mom was glad I did, so I'll just say that. The other thing that I wanted to talk about really quick was to Todd Everly, the Guardian program, would y'all be training that piece of it for the district? I was just curious, and I might, this might be something that needs to come later, but I just had to, I had to ask, because it was curiosity killed the cat on that one.
The way the Guardian program currently works is that can only be trained by the local sheriff.
Okay.
Or sheriff in a surrounding county, if the sheriff does not have a program. I don't believe there's any plans whatsoever to be doing that at the Public Service Academy.
Thank you. That's it? Thanks. And I love it. Oh, and my condolences to you and actually your family on the loss of one of your staff members, my condolences there. Thank you.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
Yes, I'll make it quick. Yes, an absolutely outstanding presentation, thank you. Obviously, there's been a lot of hard work put into not just the presentation, but what you do on a day-to-day basis. So thank you to you and your staff for all of those things. Just a couple of things, because some, I don't want to repeat, but it sounds like you have great partners in the community that are partnering with you. I would encourage you to keep reaching out and asking for partnership in local businesses, because a lot of local businesses just don't know that there's help needed, and they want to help. So I don't know how you go about doing that, but keep reaching out. Also, the, I love that you brought up the SHOP and the HOMAC. I'm from a very small town where we all took SHOP, HOMAC. I would love to see those opportunities when I've gone to open houses in middle schools and high schools, and I guess elementary also, but mostly middle and high. Those particular courses are not pointed out or shined on or highlighted as much. I think that we could all do a better job at that, because those are I think that we could all do a better job at that because those are the, you know, education outside-of-the-box ways of thinking that could really, you know, be something that a child really clings on. And I think that we could do a great job at bringing more kids on if they knew about it at open house and get them excited about their new school or their new place. And with that being said, being that I am from a small town, and you brought up solar, are there ever any plans to bring up or bring into agricultural or farming or agricultural technicians?
I'll let the team talk about agriculture. In the meantime, I will have a conversation with academic services regarding middle school programming. These were not the people who would drive the middle school curriculum or highlight it, but we certainly can talk to our principals about highlighting those opportunities within their individual schools.
I will let my colleague speak about the solar, but I will tell you, we have a very robust agriculture program throughout Lee County and all different facets. When you speak to AgriTech, we have aquaponics and aquaculture. We also are working very hard to bring more robotics, so drones and farm bots. And we have a team member that's constantly bringing speakers in to educate our students on the vast array of occupations available within the agriculture industry. And now we do an annual Ag Expo with FGCU where we bring students out to see all the different opportunities.
Any other questions and comments? Ms. Morgan?
Yes, so I'm listening to this, and I'm thinking, how do we link CTE, especially in the elementary schools, with the bus to curriculum? And specifically, having listened to the Lab School presentation on project-based learning, is there a way that we can incorporate somehow problems in the K-5 curriculum that draw in content so, in such a way that when these kids walk on a bus, they understand that the career they're looking at requires all the content that they learn in, you know, in silos in elementary school? So that's just, you know, sort of a big picture, where can we go with that? And I would love to say more about it, but I'm gonna stop. I do have a question about the impact of the seven-period day on the CTE programs, and that may be something the superintendent wants to address. I will also say that since you've last presented, the participation of the business community in the advisory capacity, that has been huge. You guys have made a real effort on that part, and I congratulate you on that. But I am curious about the impact of the seven-period day on the CTE programs.
I can't speak to CTE specifically, I'll have to turn to the experts, but I will tell you, two dialogues in with our students, the reviews have been mixed. In the two high schools with student bodies, principals not being in the room, having a chance both in a sit-down setting as well as an auditorium-style setting, we made a change to how we're addressing and how we're talking with the kids. They're pretty mixed. Some of the kids really love the fact that they're in a seven-period day, others, especially as you move to the upperclassmen, the juniors and seniors, who are used to a four-period day, you know, a four-by-four schedule. So it's kind of interesting. So I'm only two dialogues in, that's only about a hundred students total. That's not enough to have a large enough sample size for me to come back with something definitive, but I do believe there could be some impact with CTE in some of our programs. I'll let them speak to it.
Okay.
Let me just answer about the high school fire program that we have. It's challenging. This is the first year that they're there every single day throughout, you know, a period of time of four hours. So we're working through it, we're gonna make sure that they're successful, but there's some challenges from the block training, I mean, the block schedule to the seven-period schedule for the fire program.
We see similar challenges, not only with the Fire Academy, but also our health occupations. Our health occupations coordinator had to work very hard with the clinical affiliation agreements and come up with plans so that they could have the proper amount of time that's required for licensure that would work with the schedule. And those are for definitely the upper level, but when you're talking about these industry certifications, so we're gonna wanna look at the impact on our pass rate for industry certifications because there really is a block of time that needs to be attributed to learning to try to meet the objectives of these exams. And we did get feedback from teachers who had been in block and also seven-period previously years ago, and their concerns about, you know, having that shorter time together, more difficult to go in-depth with the objectives of the exams.
And I'll follow up to that. One of the things that we can do is we can study other large urban districts who are operating on a seven-period day, what they're doing in the CTE and the career and technical world, technical college worlds, to carve out that time. One of the best questions we're asking the kids when I go out and talk to them is, if you could build your ideal school system, what would it be? And one of the things they talk about very specifically is what I would refer to non-traditional learners, that they lose some of their friends because they don't fit that seven to two-thirty, seven to three, eight to four, they don't fit that model. They've got other things that they're competing with in terms of providing for family, et cetera, et cetera. But another thing they wanted to know is why we couldn't adapt to more of a collegiate style of scheduling in our university, like is available in our universities, where if I had a class like Health Assistance, why can't I have a day like when I took genetics? Why couldn't I have a whole day where I could be in a lab for an extended period of time in order to do the work that was necessary for the coursework? So that's one of the things that we have to look at, the challenges, we start to build a school system that doesn't reflect the school system all of you and I went to, but really reflects the needs of our children and what they need, not only for their academic side, but also for their career exploration and to be successful on those culminating exams as well.
Anybody else?
I've got one question.
Go ahead, Ms. Juvenelli.
One real quick question. On the twenty-four students for the firefighter-one program, is there scholarship opportunities for them to continue that beyond, you know, to get to be the full firefighter? So, and it starts, but is there opportunity for them to, because some may not continue if there's a financial situation that they're unable to do so? I was just curious.
Yeah, and short, every recruit, when they come as an adult learner, they're all eligible for financial aid on all three campuses. So they apply, we use Fort Myers Technical College's financial aid team. There's scholarships available to them. We have the Southwest Florida Heroes Foundation, which is very active with us, and they're also eligible for Pell and some other state and federal financial aid, just like any adult.
Thank you.
Anybody else before I make my comments? Okay, we're over on time, so I'll try to make them quick. First of all, my condolences to Mr. Bailey's family and his colleagues for a loss. I'm deeply sorry to hear that. So getting back to the presentation, great presentation by everyone. One of the things, and I've talked to many of you about it, is one of my, one of my goals up here is to be a cheerleader for CTE up here, whether it's up here, whether it's in the community, I think very highly of it, especially as a business owner and making sure that we have students that have, you know, different outcomes for success. I think that is vital in today's world. So, real brief, I just wanted to address something, a quick comment. I have some other questions, but I think I'll send those to the superintendent to pass on. In regards to elementary, I know Director Davis had talked about this, and Director Pease a little bit actually talked about it with Principal Kurtz over here, but I'd like to see even more of an immersion with elementary school exposure. I just did some reading over at some of the elementary schools, and they had career dress-up day, and I'd like to see more just, you know, immersion and experience with it, you know, they can talk, you know, being about, you know, whether it's a nurse or in automotive, firefighting, those kind of things. I think that would be a continuation of a great thing. So that's all I have to say at the moment. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for what all of you do. Special thanks to Director Everly for your commitment as law enforcement in this community. So thank you, everyone. Next up on the agenda, we have item four, Lee Virtual School with Principal McMillan.
Board members, this presentation grew out of some of the questions that you asked while we were involved with some of our choice fair with some of our high schools. This was always a planned presentation. We actually had it on the docket right after Ms. McMillan was appointed, but we decided to wait, get her feet more firmly on the ground in the virtual world. And I think virtual is still, despite the fact that it's probably more than ten years old, is a requirement for each one of the sixty-seven school districts, it's still kind of an unknown world, other than how it was utilized during the COVID crisis. And the COVID situation is not the best implementation of a virtual model. School districts across the entire country did what they had to do in order to keep students learning. But the virtual program can be a tool in our tool chest or toolbox. It can help us not only with those students who learn unconventionally or within non-traditional hours, but they can also help accelerate our students, creating that space that you were asking about, CTE, but also room for a calculus B.C. course, which rarely do students get to, or that A.P. foreign language requirement, because they just don't have enough space in their schedule when they come in as a freshman. So there's opportunities here. State law allows fourth and fifth graders to move forward and take sixth and seventh grade math, depending on their score on the FAS or the former FSA. So that then starts to clip middle school credits. When you start clipping middle school credits and removing those, you wind up with freshmen with lots of space in their schedules to begin to look at even, you know, high school diplomas and AS or AA degrees. So really looking forward to Jennifer McMillan Barnes and her process and sort of establishing what it is, what it isn't, and more importantly, what it can be.
Thank you for having me. My name is Jennifer McMillan Barnes, and I'm proud to be the principal of Lee Virtual School. Can you hear me now? Okay. Sorry, it's my first time. Thank you for having me today, Board and Dr. Bernier. I'm very happy to be here to share more information about Lee Virtual School. Today, I want to talk about an overview of Lee Virtual School. I want to share with you the benefits, and I want to talk to you about the future and the expansion of our program. So this first picture here is the reason we exist, and it is because of students. We are a unique learning-style school, and we all, every student is different, every kid is different, and they all have unique ways of learning. Lee Virtual is not for everyone, but it is for a lot of kids, and it is a great way for kids who have unique styles to be able to have a school that is flexible. Well, Lee Virtual School was established in two thousand and nine as a result of Florida State Statute one zero zero two point four five. According to that statute, every, the school district must support full and part-time options, must provide offerings in a K-12 model, and must contract with a state-approved virtual instruction program provider. We contract with Florida Virtual School for our curriculum. I get this question a lot, what is the difference between Lee Virtual School and Florida Virtual School? So we are a franchise of Florida Virtual, which means we utilize their programs and their curriculum. We primarily service students in Lee County. We do have an agreement with a few other counties for classes if we were to offer something or they were to offer something that would be for our students. One of the major benefits is students follow the district instructional calendar. So if you have one student in virtual and you have one student in what we call brick and mortar, which would be in a traditional school, they are able to keep, the parents are able to keep the same calendar with their children. We employ Lee County teachers. That is a picture of our teachers. Our students get to participate in the events, every event that Lee County has. That is a picture of our book battle students and teachers. That is a very big difference than Florida Virtual because they are within our county. They can participate in our events and in our sports and clubs at schools, at brick and mortar schools. The school district retains FTE funding for students. We are a Lee County school, so when students enroll with us, we are not losing FTE funding to Florida Virtual. Because we are a school, we have approximately eight-hundred-and-seventy-three, give or take, those from about a week ago, eight-hundred-and-four full-time and sixty-nine part-time. The part-time students currently are at Dunbar High School. We are helping them fulfill their online credit for their international center that they have there. We have thirty-eight teachers, literacy coach, gifted resource, three ESE teachers, two counselors, two assistant principals. We have a hundred-and-forty students in our ESE program. Seventy-seven are non-gifted and sixty-three gifted. We have thirty-nine students in our multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, who are receiving additional support. And we also have seventy-six learners, twenty in our part-time program, sorry, E.S.L. learners, and fifty-six in our full-time program. Very representative of what brick and mortar schools. Why would, why do parents and families choose Lee Virtual School? First and foremost, it is a high-quality education. It provides structured flexibility. And what that means is it provides a very structured curriculum and format for our students, which are the Florida State standards, the best standards and that represent the state of Florida. However, the flexibility part comes in being able to do your coursework around your life and whatever your child is involved in. We have students who are in sports teams where they travel the world. We have some students who are in different types of competitions, and so it's really important, they want to stay connected to their county and to their schools here in Fort Myers. However, they want flexibility. They want to be able to do their work at night or maybe on the weekend, depending on what their schedule offers. We do offer full and part-time options. You can go to school K through twelve with Lee Virtual School and earn a diploma. Part-time options allow for acceleration. If you, give you a good for instance, we have quite a few eighth graders who like to go ahead and take their HOPE course before they go to high school. We have some schools, Oakhamic was one of those schools, where we may only have three to four kids taking geometry. Well, they could take geometry while they were sitting in possibly a math teacher's classroom to get extra support. It provides the opportunity to graduate early. We have quite a few students who take advantage of that option. What does it mean to be a full-time student at Lee Virtual School? You follow the school district of Lee County instructional calendar, participate in Lee County extracurricular activities, follow the curriculum from Florida Virtual. You are able to participate in dual enrollment. We have quite a few students who do that in high school. It is a unique educational option for them, and they are able to earn a high school diploma. Why do students choose part-time? We follow the FLVS Flex model, which is their curriculum. They are able to attend a brick and mortar school at the same time. They are also able to take courses in addition to their brick and mortar courses, which is the acceleration piece. They are able to plan and personalize their education, so they're able to take a virtual course that may not be offered at their current brick and mortar school. They are able to fulfill online graduation requirement, which all graduating high school students must have an online credit. And they have opportunities to take additional electives above and beyond what they currently are taking at their brick and mortar. Another question I am asked often is, what does it take to be a virtual school student? I say that the parent and the student have to have all of these skills because it requires a great partnership between parents or families with their student. Students have to be able to take initiative, ability to meet goals. Our curriculum is very structured, so there is very specific assignments that are due for every course, every single week, that they must turn in. The word pace is used quite often, they have to keep up with their pace, which is a little bit different than in a brick and mortar school. They must be able to follow multi-step directions. The curriculum is a reading and writing-based curriculum. While it is reading and writing-based, teachers and Florida Virtual provide interactive tools for them to learn, such as videos and interactive programs and things such as that. such as videos and interactive programs and things such as that. However, it is mainly a reading and writing curriculum, which means they need to be able to read directions and understand what is being asked of them when they're completing their tasks or their assignments. They have to be able to stay focused despite distractions. I don't know about you, but when I'm at home, I am often distracted by little things. It is the same for students. They have to set aside their time for schoolwork, and their amount of time for school should equal the same amount of time as in a brick and mortar setting. Each assignment that students have can take anywhere from one to two hours to complete, depending on the level of the student or the ability in that subject. They have to set aside that time. Like I said, parents especially have to make sure that that time is sacred for their child to learn and make sure that they are checking up that their assignments are completed. And they have to be willing to talk to adults. In the virtual world, they cannot pass a course unless they complete two discussion-based assessments with their teachers, and they do those bi-weekly. What does the model of learning look like for a Lee Virtual student? They utilize the virtual, Florida Virtual curriculum. The learning model is mostly an asynchronous learning model, which means that they do most of the work on their own, on their own time. So they have to be able to read, synthesize, and understand what they're reading. It is, we do operate on semesters rather than quarters. Brick and mortar is a quarter system, we are a semester system. They do, the teachers create pace charts of the curriculum so that the students have it very structured for them, week by week, to know exactly what they need to do in each course. I already spoke about it being a reading and writing-based curriculum, and there are weekly live lessons with teachers. This is where teachers go deeper into the standards that they are, that the students are currently working on. This is where teachers answer questions. This is where teachers talk about misconceptions. So there are, they do have the ability to connect with their teacher through Zoom weekly. In the virtual school world, we use many curriculum tools, and these are some of the same ones that we use in the district. We use Agnew Adique. We have dual enrollment with FSW, Kaiser. We utilize iReady, Alex. Our ESOL students utilize the Imagine Learning for math and for learning, I'm sorry, and for reading. And our E.S.E. students use Ascend Math and Snap and Read. Now, what is the difference between elementary and secondary? There are, it's very similar, except there are a few key differences. The students all participate in the weekly live lessons. They have to verbally demonstrate content mastery with their teacher. I think sometimes in brick and mortar, students can get away with not being verbal in their classroom, but in virtual environment, they have to verbalize their learning. Elementary only has four core courses, language arts, math, science, and social studies. They do not have electives. In secondary, they have six minimum courses. They can take more, but six is their minimum. Students in elementary work three to five hours per day, I'm sorry, per course, per week. And secondary, it has about five to six hours of student work time daily. Elementary has three to four assignments per course due weekly, and secondary, two to three assignments per course weekly. Parents in the, in elementary are key to a student's success. They must act as a learning guide with their child to make sure they're understanding the material. In the secondary world, however, parents, the main role of the parents is to monitor on a daily basis with their child, the completing the assignments and tasks. What does the week in the life look like? It's kind of a cyclical process. It just happens the same way every single week. Students have to create an agenda for themselves. It's such an important skill for life. I do it on a daily basis, and I'm sure most of you do too. You live by your agenda. Students have to create that for themselves, that has a calendar that schedules their live, their courses, when they're going to work on their courses, and their live lessons and DBAs, which are the discussion-based assessments that they have to complete with their teachers. They have to log into class every day, every single class, every single day. That is like stepping into their classroom and saying, "I am here." So that's how we take attendance. They must review the materials and the resources for each lesson. The curriculum offers an abundance of resources for students if they're not understanding. So there are a lot of resources for students to review. They must admit three to four assignments per day to stay on pace. And like I said, every student is different. Some students, it may take an hour on an assignment, while others, it may take two hours, depending on what the, what the assignment is asking or what the task is requiring. They must complete bi-weekly discussion-based assessments, where they express their content mastery and attend the live lessons. Week in the life of a parent. They must determine what are the assignments that are due for the week. They must help the student create an agenda, because from my middle school years, that is not an easy, that's not a skill that most students have. So they have to work with their child to make sure that they have that schedule. Communicate with teachers, counselors, and staff when they have questions or need us. Monitor their daily completion and commit that time as sacred for their learning. Lee Virtual School teachers, what do they do all day? A lot of people think they want to be a virtual school teacher until they actually see what they do all day. They are available to their parents and their students from 8:00 a.m. every morning to 8:00 p.m. by phone. They are texting, they are calling, they are documenting all of the contact, they're emailing. They prepare the weekly live lessons based on the standard that they are currently in, in that week. They take daily attendance. They complete grading within 48 hours. They work individually with students. They have office hours every week as well. So if students just want to come in and have some one-on-one time with the teacher, they can. They post live lessons. After they have the live lessons, they post them so that if there are students who are not able to attend the live lesson, they can go back and re-watch it. They attend PLC, department and faculty meetings, IEPs, MTSS meetings. They also prepare lessons for small group learning and intervention. They complete the discussion-based assessments, and I already spoke about the office hours. So let's talk about why is it beneficial? Our world is much different now after COVID. The virtual, virtual jobs and virtual learning on college campuses is greater than it's ever been in the past. And these skills that are required through Lee Virtual School to be successful are the skills that they are going to need to be successful in their future. They're, they're very important skills. It supports student readiness for colleges and careers, provides flexibilities for the families, and you can manage a class anywhere 24 hours a day. You also have access to the curriculum at any point, at any time. And students and parents manage their own learning time. These skills right here are what we're looking for when we are hiring. We're looking for students or for employees who have adaptive thinking. They're able to communicate and collaborate. Problem-solving technology is just part of our world for just about everything now. Initiative, we want our workers to have initiative. And personal time management, that time, that personal management of yourself is so important in accomplishing tasks. How does Lee Virtual School benefit the school district of Lee County? We are a valuable tool. And I hope if, one thing you can remember from my presentation is that we can be a great tool for our district. The more students that come to us versus Florida Virtual is keeping funding in our district. That is a big one. Providing families the educational options that they deserve. Meeting the high school requirement, online requirement. Providing acceleration opportunities beyond a typical school day. Provide unlimited possibilities for our students. I had the great pleasure of going to Orange County, which is a very robust virtual learning school. And I came back so refreshed and inspired by some of the things I would like to see for our Lee Virtual School. And it is a valuable tool for the district. So when I start laying out kind of what the vision is for Lee Virtual School, it's, it's very expansive, because the possibilities are limitless. I would like to partner with schools more at every grade level, high, middle, and even elementary, to provide virtual learning labs for students there. That is one of the ways that Orange County utilizes their teachers, and it is a really amazing program that they have. I would like to align with CTE and provide more CTE courses, maybe that other schools cannot offer, that the virtual platform would allow more students to have that opportunity. I would like to retain Lee County students in Lee County and the funding that goes along with those students. During the pandemic, we lost quite a few students, and I would like to get them back. We are adding the university, we are adding the diploma program for Cambridge in this upcoming school year. We often get students who have had Cambridge courses and who would like to continue their path to a diploma. So I think that that will be very beneficial to a lot of our students. Increase acceleration options. There are some courses that a lot of our students are taking at Florida Virtual that we do not currently offer. Like, once again, I would like to keep that FTE funding in Lee County. I would like to see Lee Virtual return to an A-school grade. That is a passion of mine. And ultimately, also become a premier virtual school in the state of Florida with these options.
For the sake of time and for your, I'll just listen to your discussion and then provide my comments as necessary based upon your questions.
Board member, comments and questions? Ms. Jordan?
Thank you for the presentation. I do have a grandchild in virtual, so this was good information. The 38 teachers, where are they housed at? Are they here in the district?
They work from home.
They work from home?
They are, they are online.
Okay. And then, and thank you for clarifying, because I know on the presentation, it said weekly Zoom meetings with teachers for questions, and then it went back and said that between 8:00 to 8:00, that they can telephone them if they had any questions?
They may text, email, call, yes.
Okay, so that, to me, is really important to make sure that if there was a question, that they didn't have to wait for the weekly DBA in order to find out what they needed.
Correct.
And then also, when you were talking about, when you look at the Florida FLVS, they have a lot of, a lot more, more electives than I know we have. So is that something that the kids, if they're part of ours, Lee, they could do those part-time?
They can, yes.
Just as extra?
Yes.
I mean, be full-time here, but then do extra?
Yes.
To get that? Okay, and then, because I think it's really important to make sure that they have the relationship with the teachers. And that was my other question. They have one teacher or they have multiple teachers?
It depends on the level. In elementary, they have one teacher. But when it comes to middle school, it's just like in a regular brick and mortar middle school. You're going to have your subject area expertise and certifications. So they will have up to four, possibly six teachers, depending on their electives.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. I have just one question. Slide six shows 873 total students in February of 2023. Can we have a breakdown by student demographics? And if we have the information on free reduced lunch? I don't think we have that, but if we do, can we get that breakdown, please? That would be helpful. And I have to tell you, I've got kids who have taken online courses for various reasons, and I had no idea the parent had a role. I am being completely serious. I say to them, "You do your work, and if I get a text from your teacher, you're in big trouble." And when I get a text from the teacher, they're in big trouble. Otherwise, I have no role in their online course at all. And they've all done great, so maybe we should do a better job of advertising. Parents are supposed to be involved, because I didn't know that. There we go. Couple of questions. Per pupil cost is one. You don't have to give that to me now. I, I don't understand the funding. If a child is being funded in a traditional brick and mortar school full-time and then taking virtual classes additionally, how do we get that funding? So that's a question. I want to understand about acceleration. When you talk about acceleration, you're not talking about the pace through the course or what I would call performance-based learning. You're simply talking about adding additional courses or, well, that's pretty much what you're talking about, adding additional courses. Okay, and then my last question is, I don't understand what a virtual learning lab is.
Okay, awesome.
You take the virtual learning lab one, I'll take the other two.
So what a virtual learning lab is, is that we work with brick and mortar to have a teacher for that brick and mortar. So our teacher takes care of all the curriculum, the pacing guide, the discussion-based assessments, while a brick and mortar may have a para and/or another teacher in the classroom. So I'll give you the example of Dunbar High School. There is a para in the classroom for those students, and then our teacher is handling the grading, the, all of the pieces that go along with the course, the live lessons.
So in short, a virtual learning lab, and it's interesting, because I think conceptually, a lot of us get around a space in a school building with all these computers. Now that our children have Chromebooks, a virtual learning lab can occur just about anywhere. However, you do need to make sure that the students are supervised. So particularly, I'm not quite sure what the course is at Dunbar. I'm familiar with the model where middle school and high school foreign language was taught to students in middle school for Mandarin Chinese. You can't find a Mandarin Chinese teacher for every middle school in our district. But you can find maybe one or two who are capable of doing it in the virtual world. Those students would take their Chromebook into a lab where they're supervised, and they would take their course online. So that's what we mean about a virtual learning lab. As to the financing of this, this is really important for us to get our heads around. A few years back, the Florida Legislature cleaned up something I think is really valuable. Up until a certain point, if a student was enrolled for seven or eight periods, depending on what we were doing at the time, the school district got eight eighths or one full whole of that pizza. If a student was also taking a virtual class with Florida Virtual, they were paying additional money to Florida Virtual. What the state figured out was that they only had one pizza. So instead of eight slices, for every time a student takes another virtual class as an acceleration or in addition to what they're scheduled at their high school, they cut that pizza. So eight slices become nine, nine slices become 10, 10 slices become 11. We still get our eight, but the other pieces go off to the virtual environment. So what Ms. McMillan Barnes was saying about keeping the FTE in our community, every time a student takes a course with Florida Virtual School, the FTE leaves our system and goes to them. That slice of pie goes there. Versus here, we at least keep it within our system. So one of our big pushes going into next year and the year beyond, because it takes time to teach everyone, will be that when registering a student for a virtual class, your first option as a school is to look to our virtual school first, so that FTE can stay within our school district. Go ahead, Ms. Morgan.
So essentially, you get the same amount of money for more teaching time, more seat time.
Essentially, that is correct, if you keep it in-house. If it goes outside...
Ms. Juvenelli?
And I want to piggyback off that, because it's really important that, because I have friends that the staff at this particular school was encouraging Florida Virtual over Lee Virtual. And I think that, and I had to have a conversation. I'm like, well, that is money leaving our district, and parents don't know that. So if it's not, I just think it's really important that the school goes to Lee Virtual first. So I think we have to do a better job in that.
One of the questions that I...
One of the questions that I had was, what is your graduation rate? And like, and also, like, the retention rate on students that are, that are not going to their parents for help or not engaging, parents aren't engaged or aware. I have a situation where a friend of mine contacted me. Her daughter is taking it at the father's home, and she's failing because she's not, the dad's at work all day, he doesn't care. And it's a kind of a family issue, but she, she knows her daughter's not graduating, but no one's doing anything about it that she's aware of. Now, it could be, you know, on the father's side of it, so it could be an issue there. But how do we have our teachers stay engaged with that, try to, you know, get with that family and contact them and work through those issues? I think she's going to wind up going back into the classroom next year, but right now, she's failing, I think it's seventh grade or something. I'm not even sure what grade, but the mother has called me all concerned in what to do, and, and I told her, she's got to talk to the father, which they don't speak. So that's that, there's that, but thank you.
If you could get us the name of that individual, I could certainly get it to Ms. McMillan, and we can start to look into what we could do to intervene. I would assume that we're already intervening at some level. So when a student does start to struggle, Jennifer, can you help the board understand what your teachers do and how they go about helping?
First and foremost, they obviously make contact with all of the parents. So that's their first step. If there can, if we put, we talk, they talk to the parents about what, you know, what they can do to help their child. And then on top of that, after that kind of goes through, then we set up conferences after, if that is not changing, we do the same things as a brick-and-mortar. Well, we set up this parent-teacher conference. We talk about, the virtual world and the understanding of parents is a big learning curve for families because it is very different. In the virtual world, parents really need to be focused on their pace. How far along are they? And there's always a lot of confusion there. After the first semester, I set up, and I had a tremendous amount of meetings with families because pace is what matters more in the virtual world rather than grade. Grade doesn't occur until the end, after students have completed or haven't completed. So the grade can always, is only reflecting on what they currently have assignments that they have done, if that makes sense. So we have those meetings, and we do what is called a Student Profile for Success Meeting, where we run through all the components of, that the parent needs to know. And then we talk about the next steps for the family and how to catch up because you can't catch up overnight once you get behind. It is a slow, deliberate method because you have to do a little bit more every single week than what the expected is. And you have to work on the weekends and spring break and those additional days. But we create a plan to help that family get back on track. And yes, I would love to know that name because I need to see if we have done those, make sure that those things have happened.
The other thing I've encouraged Jennifer to look into is unlike our traditional brick-and-mortars where they send a student like that sometimes away based upon a code of conduct violation, this is a great opportunity which virtual students, full-time virtual students really dislike. They get suspended to school. So they have to come out of their home, and they have to come to the office, and they have to spend quality time with their principal, their assistant principal. The teacher then could come in, also spend some additional time. They don't like that. And it's always sometimes finding what children like and motivating with what they like. But I think it's also very important to find out what also motivates them to become more independent of the school, and one of which is to bring them to the actual campus here in the, here in the central office and do that. So that's another strategy that we're planning to implement moving forward.
Absolutely. Workdays is what we're going to call them, and you know, children don't like that.
I just want to thank you because this, we've been waiting for this virtual school conversation. So I just want to thank you for that, and I just wanted to throw it out there. My daughter just recently graduated over the summer at a university, and her professor that was in class could, the day before or a couple hours before, say, "Oh, it's going to be virtual today," and they all had to hop on. I mean, they're, they're used to that. That would be something very difficult for me, but that is the way of learning. That's the new way of learning, and students are adapting very well. And so I just wanted to throw that out there because, so thank you for what you do.
Anyone else? Ms. Patricca?
Yeah, I just wonder if there's a way that we can, and I think my, I think my son is taking a Florida Virtual class because it wasn't offered by, I always push my kids toward Lee County first, but it's not in Focus. Is there a way, because I'd be more on my kids if, when I opened up Focus and I saw their grade in their online course. Can we get it for Florida Virtual, and is it available for Lee?
So grading is in the Florida Virtual, what is called educator, where you can go in and you can see their grades. We don't put grades in Focus until the end of the semester. So we put that final grade in there. Grades, that's one of the things we do in the conferences with the parents is we teach them how to monitor the grades. So the parents go, can be, can go into the parent portal and see how their child is doing. One of the rule of thumbs is every single week of school, they should be increasing their completion rate by 5%. So we have approximately 20, you know, 18 to 20 weeks in a semester, they should be increasing their completion by 5% every single week. So now we're in about week nine, so they should be about 45% complete with all of their courses. So it's that training and the different language that is virtual school, that component of the conferences, how to be successful that way. Once a family and a student really understands what it takes, they enjoy virtual learning because it becomes routine, and it becomes like, this is my dedicated time to do it, and they're very successful.
Yeah, I hear that, but, but for a kid that's part-time, not full-time, to expect two different systems of monitoring, I don't know, customer service, friendliness, just throwing it out there.
I will take a look into the focus, see what we can adjust and whether we can make that. But I think it's also really incumbent upon us when the student enrolls to make sure the parent's very clear into which platform. Because once into the platform, it's the same exact curriculum. But which organization they're moving towards. And it's important for long-term, for Jennifer's school to be financed slightly differently because what we're pushing through to the virtual school, to the Florida Virtual School, is due to the fact that she can't resource it with her own teachers. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to move towards more like a course-selection enrollment system where we know in the spring how many kids are planning to take a part-time and full-time load from us. Then we work with budget to make sure she's appropriately financed. And if those enrollments appear, then we continue to move forward. If they don't, she'll have to make adjustments. But we need, we're in the process of developing another system for her because she is not a traditional brick-and-mortar. She's not, she's not financed exactly the same way. We need to finance her based upon the kids that are signing up for her classes. And the more kids we get to sign up for foreign language, the more foreign language teachers we'll need. Then on top of it, we don't push them through to Florida Virtual where we lose the FTE.
So do we need more foreign language teachers? Or is it possible to take that French teacher at South and have them pick up an online course?
That's a really good question. I'm not saying we need to hire more, and foreign language is just an example for those watching this. But there is a conversation that needs to occur with our collective bargaining units related to what they, at one point, called adjunct teachers. I like to call them part-time teachers, meaning they teach a full boat where they teach, and they get paid on top of that to teach a virtual class. Makes a great training ground for the principal of the virtual school because then they get used to the processes, the systems, and in all of the platforms. And they can eat, more easily transition to a full-time position. So there's some, I'm told there's some communication that they have to do with our collective bargaining units before we could actually make that happen.
We're over on time, so if you make your comments briefly, please.
Thank you. One quick question regarding what Ms. Patricca just stated. So if the grades are not shown until the end of the year and everything is done by completion, how do you know that the, that they can complete everything, but is it right? And just move on to the next?
I'll try to take this one quickly for, on behalf of the chair.
Or you can send it to me or tell me later?
Just quickly, on behalf of the chair. There is ongoing monitoring of students' progress. I think what Ms. McMillan Barnes is saying to you is ultimately, the grade gets, the final grade gets placed in Focus at the end of the semester or the end of the year. But there is ongoing progress monitoring in the Florida Virtual system that the parent can go in and check to see how their child is progressing. They can't move on to the next level of instruction until they, in some cases, demonstrate mastery at the level that they're currently working on.
Thank you, Principal McMillan. It's been a very interesting presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Next up is item five, land acquisition disposal process.
Mr. Chair, while they're working up, and by the time they sit and turn on their, their computer, I'll be done. I want to make something very, very clear. This is a presentation to educate me, to educate all of us and educate our community as to how we acquire and how we might sell property. We are in no means, way, shape, or form currently, with anything that we did show today, planning sales of these particular pieces of property. We've had lots of constituent emails concerned that we're doing this, doing that. This was simply a way for all of us to understand when I, when we talk about purchasing of a piece of property, how that process works, and also in the case where we would need to sell off a piece of property, vacant property that we own, how we would go about that. I thought this was valuable for all of us to understand how those processes work because we will be facing some of these decisions in the future.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Bernier, my name is Joel DeGuzman. I'm the interim director for planning growth and capacity here at the school district. I put this presentation together, like Dr. Bernier said, at his request and at the board's request, to bring everybody up to speed on how we acquire land and how we dispose of land if we need to in the future. The agenda today, we're going to talk about the current site acquisition process that the district uses. We're going to touch a little bit on what due diligence is. That makes up a very large portion of site acquisition. We're going to talk about the district site selection committee, the roles of the superintendent and the board, the current site disposal process, and then we're going to do a brief overview of our currently owned vacant parcels. So the current site acquisition process, and I must preface this by apologizing for this presentation is pretty wordy. It was requested of me to put some more images in here, and that was rather difficult. The images you see are my attempt at making a flow chart of this process, and it was so large I couldn't even get it on the PowerPoint to display. The current site acquisition process, the planning department is always looking for new property. The district has been growing exponentially for the past few years, so we are constantly looking for new sites that could be viable as a school location. When sites are located, we have internal discussions among different departments in the district, the planning department, operational staff, our land brokers that we contract through Trinity Commercial Group LLC, also known as TCG. And then we also touch base with the capital committee and the budget department because as has been practiced, the budget department usually keeps a line item on the capital plan for land purchases so that we always have that capital available if we come across a parcel that we feel is advantageous for us to acquire. As we make our way through the internal process of, well, is it a good deal? Is it in a good location? We bring that information to the superintendent. We do so through the chief operations officer and using what is called a letter of intent. And that letter of intent gets a signature from the superintendent, and what it does is it basically gives the green light for our brokers to start a conversation with the owner of this property. You know, maybe they came to the district at first, or maybe we identified the parcel as being advantageous to us, but this letter of intent gives them the authorization to start that negotiation. Are you interested in selling? What do you think you'd want for the property? Things of that sort. Based on negotiations and back-and-forth conversations that the broker has with the owner, we then move towards a PSA, which is a purchase or sale agreement, is what it stands for. When we get to the point of a PSA, this is where all of the negotiation has taken place. The terms have become agreeable to district staff, agreeable to the seller. We've had the legal department vet the PSA to make sure that it covers the district legally and that we have our proper exit clauses built into it. And then we bring it forward to the superintendent for a signature. Now, it's important to understand that at this point in time, when the superintendent signs the PSA, he is not legally binding us to purchase the property. What it is doing is giving us the green light to enter into what is known as the due diligence process, which I will get into further on a later slide. It's also at this point in the process, when the superintendent informs the board, that we have a potential site acquisition. Even though we've made it up to this point of letter of intent, soft negotiations, and signing of a PSA, nothing is set in stone. Real estate transactions are always sensitive, and even more so when dealing with the school district. After the PSA has been signed, we enter the due diligence process. That's where the planning department engages with our brokers. We engage with contractors on our continuing services contracts to go into the property and start analyzing it more in depth. We do boundary surveys, we do environmental analysis, check for protected species. We don't want to hurt any burrowing owls or gopher tortoises. Assuming that everything clears due diligence and it looks all right, we then bring it forward through cabinet in anticipation of bringing it to the board Once the PSA comes to the board for ratification, if the board so chooses to move forward with the acquisition of the site and it's voted and approved on, once that PSA is signed, closing typically occurs 30 to 60 days afterwards. Every transaction is different. Sometimes the seller has different requirements. They may want it to be more expedited, they might want it to be faster, or they might want it to be slower. And then the final step is, you know, once the, once the PSA's signed, the closing documents have been signed, then we place our signage on the property. And in some cases, we may have to fence in the property if it's a large vacant parcel or if it's in close proximity to residential areas. You know, we'll take whatever steps are necessary to make sure that the site is secured. So I want to touch a little bit on the due diligence process. This is the longest process of the real estate transaction for the district. It presents the most amount of work that needs to be done, and it also presents the area in which a lot of deals can fall through. During due diligence, you know, one of the primary things here in Southwest Florida we need to worry about is a phase one environmental assessment. We need to determine, are there any protected wetlands on the site that we may or may not see from the road or from an aerial? They do a full boundary and topographic survey of the site. They check for the protected species, they check for soil toxicity. Another thing we have to take into consideration is where are the closest utilities? If we are going to put a school on this site in the future, I mean, it's great if it's 100 acres for a steal, but if the closest utilities are 40 miles away, we're probably not going to look at it. And we also need to investigate title searches, check for zoning restrictions, and things of that sort. It's during this process that the potential for hiccups come about, and sometimes deals fall through because, you know, maybe we find out, oh, there is, you know, an entire herd of gopher tortoises on the property that we can't relocate, or the entire place is a swamp, or, you know, it was used for dumping toxic chemicals 40 years ago that nobody knew about. And unfortunately, it takes time to figure that out, and it does take a little bit of money expended by the district at this point to figure that out. During the due diligence process, one of the things that we do is we bring the potential acquisition to what's called the site selection committee. The site selection committee is established under Board Policy 9.01. I do believe that policy number is going to change once all of the Neola policies are adopted. It consists of six members appointed by the DAC Committee and three members by EDAC. And it is created for an advisory capacity only, and it's a way for us to engage the community and let them know that the district is pursuing a piece of property in a certain location and to get their input and their opinions. And sometimes we get intrinsic knowledge from the site selection committee. We may find out that, you know, oh, a very prominent teacher in the district, you know, lived right across the street from this piece of vacant property you're looking to acquire. That might help fuel naming conventions for a school in the future. Or we might find out things about the historic significance of the property. A lot of people don't know that, you know, Lee High Acres used to have a railroad back in the day and a fully functioning train station, you know, Buckingham Airport. All of that historical information can sometimes come to light by bringing this to the site selection committee, and it may or may not have an impact on how we move forward in developing the site, especially if there's anything historic that we want to preserve. anything historic that we want to preserve. The roles of the superintendent and the board. As I've said before, the superintendent receives his recommendations from staff. We try to do absolutely as much of the legwork as we can before we bring a recommendation to him so that he has all of the information necessary to make a decision. His signature on the binding, on the non-binding letter of intent, as stated before, is to begin those soft negotiations. His signature on the PSA gives us the green light to start due diligence. And then he informs the board members as necessary of the upcoming acquisition. The roles of the board are to review his recommendations, review staff's recommendations, maintain confidentiality until the PSA is ratified. This one is an important one. I don't mean to lecture anyone, but real estate transactions are very sensitive in nature, and the district has been burned in the past, let's just say that, by information coming to light. We also have the board review the results of the due diligence studies, and then obviously they vote to ratify the PSA, or, you know, if something is amiss, they can vote to deny the purchase. And then after the PSA is signed, the board chair is responsible as one of the signers of the closing documents. Site disposal process is, in a lot of ways, much simpler, but in a couple of ways, a little bit more complicated. We have grown a lot as far as land acquisition goes in the district over the years. In the mid-2000s, the district acquired a ton of property back when land was cheap and people were willing to sell. The problem we have run into is building codes have changed, zoning requirements have changed, South Florida water management restrictions have changed, and so a lot of the properties that we have acquired in the past may not be large enough for the schools we are building today. 20, 30 years ago, if we acquired a 14-acre parcel in Cape Coral, it might have seemed like a great idea, and now we're looking at our elementary schools taking up about 20 acres. So it becomes unusable in that respect. So as we evaluate our sites, as we evaluate our growth and our projections and where the students are coming from and where they're going, we may come up to the point where we have determined that properties are excess, and it would be advantageous for us to sell them. That process, similar to acquisition, happens internally as we review our projections every year, and if a recommendation comes forward, it would come to the superintendent through the Chief Operations Officer from the planning department and operations staff. We would have had our brokers evaluate the site, determine the needs in the area, whether it could be marketed as a commercial real estate or residential real estate, to get the best, and I believe the real estate term is, best highest use of the property if we decide to sell it. The hiccup that comes with this is, by statutory requirements, a school district cannot just sell off a piece of property that it owns if it decides it doesn't want it. It does have to come through the board for approval, and then it has to be submitted to the Department of Education for approval that we are selling off excess real estate. I haven't had the experience of going through that process with the Department of Education in my time with the district, but I have been told that it's more of a formality. Once the board approves it, they're not really giving too much scrutiny towards the decision to declare property excess. Once that's done, we can list the property for sale using the best available information we've been given by our brokers as far as price points, and then wait and see what happens. Next, I'm going to do a quick overview of our district-owned parcels, our vacant parcels that we have. This is our east zone. Some of these parcels you may be familiar with. Some of them are kind of obscure, and not a lot of people know that we actually own them. I'm just going to start in the top left and go counterclockwise on each of these slides. So we have an 18-acre parcel on Olga Drive. That's just north of State Road 80, across from where Buckingham Road intersects State Road 80. We have a 19-acre parcel down the road south of Verveterio High School. It's on the east side of Buckingham Road that we own. We have a large 115-acre parcel that is next to Oakhamic Middle School and Manatee Elementary on Tyce Street. The State Road 82 parcel was acquired just recently, and currently that is being scheduled for the OO Middle School. That just cleared the procurement process. That is a large 184-acre site. There are some wetlands in the southeast corner, but we believe, looking at initial studies of the site, that we could fit up to three schools, possibly four facilities on the site without having to mitigate the wetlands. But we'll determine that as we go down the road. Joel Boulevard, we own a 45-acre site that is currently being eyeballed for a future high school in Lehigh. In Greenbrier in Lehigh, this is another example of a piece of land that was acquired. Thought it was a good idea at the time, but at 13 acres, it would require some lot assemblage at this point to make it suitable for a school. And then we have the Tuckahoe Road property, approximately 102 acres in northeastern Lehigh. That is currently scheduled for our next high school, NNN, which just cleared procurement. And then we are planning on sharing that site with a future middle school, making it a two-school site. Not shown on the map because it would literally be a tiny little pinprick. We have a small lot in front of G Weaver Hips Elementary that's right next to the Arby's. I think it's even less than an acre, and we're just holding on to that for now. In the west zone, we have several parcels that don't have addresses yet or any kind of real landmarks for me to kind of clue you in on where they're located. But you can see that we have a 38-acre parcel, a 16-acre parcel, and a 25-acre parcel, all in close proximity to each other in the northwestern Cape Coral area. All of these could be viable for schools. The 16 would be a tight fit, but I think we might be able to make it work in the future. Moving down, we have a small 12-acre site on Northwest First Street, and then we have a 31-acre site. This is the one being considered for the new location for the Hector Cafareta School. So kudos for us for buying all this land years ago because it came in handy. We also have a small 13-acre site on Trafalgar Parkway that's adjacent to a city park, 26 acres on Northwest 11th Place. Littleton Road is an interesting piece. It is 125 acres. It is in very close proximity to Littleton Elementary. It was one of those land acquisitions years ago. We're keeping an eye on the west zone because we may see a very real need for this parcel to be a multi-school site in the future down the road. And then we also have a 13-acre parcel and a 19-acre parcel in the northern Cape areas. And also not shown for the west zone, Pine Island Elementary has a 10-acre site that is actually north of their school. It is currently a, what is it, mangrove marsh. It's part of the natural drainage in the area. Even if we wanted to do something with it, there's nothing really that we can do with that site, and there's no interest in disposing of it. And then we own a 1-acre parcel on Keo Costa out in the islands. I have no information on that as to why we own it, where it came from, or what the purpose is there. In the south zone, we have vacant land in front of our Midwest South Transportation Facility. We have the Block Lane property, which is adjacent to Astero High School, which we're looking at our current projections. We're looking that we may need to expand a high school in the south zone, so that may be advantageous to us, having that property right next to Astero High School. We have the Three Oaks property, 69 acres that butts up right against I-75. We have 40 acres on Tower Road in the far south of the zone. And then we have the Tree Line Avenue property of 24 acres up there on Daniels and Tree Line. We also have a small lot adjacent to Tanglewood Elementary. Again, not shown because you wouldn't be able to see it anyway. When that property was acquired, looking at the layout of the school and the property, it looks like that residential lot was acquired as an alternate means of access prior to the school being built. It looks like they might have wanted to do access off of the residential area into the school, but they never did anything with it. With that, I leave it to the superintendent's comments and any discussion or questions.
Thank you, Joel, and team. So two things really in the beginning. One is how we acquire, and one is how we sell. Trust and transparency is built by showing people exactly what you own. There are no current properties for sale from the school district at this time. Next steps, I think, are very important for this team to go off and evaluate, along with the committee, what some of these parcels, these 1 acres, these one-offs, these 10-acre sites that we know are not, we're not going to need, what we do. But I will caution us, and with your direction, I will remove the caution, but nobody's making any more property right now. So I would caution us with anything that is buildable, for us not to release that just yet. Because short of Hawaii is the only current island that I know is significantly adding more space to it, and that is the big island. Property is only going to do one thing, and that is going to rise in value for us. But I do think the direction I would hope we would hear today would be to at least look at our inventory of properties, make some decisions, and potentially these 1-acre lots are, and thank you for the history, Joel, related to, you know, the access to Tree Line or why we bought the lot next to Arby's. You know, we don't know, but we do know that if, with your direction, in another presentation and another briefing, we could bring these properties forward potentially as sale. But I would caution you, I'm very conservative in this manner. I just think some of the property we own was hard to come by. It was difficult to get, and its value will only rise in the next year or two or three. So I think we ought to take a look at those particular pieces of property and hold them in our portfolio until such time as the board determines that it would like to utilize those dollars to maybe purchase something north of the river. I know we have some growth happening, you know, it's happening east, but it's also going to happen north side of the river, in the Alba area, other places. So we're going to have to get creative. I do ask you to just look briefly at east. East is so divided into sublots. When you think about property for a school building, we need something that isn't already subdivided into individual building lots. So while we know we have growth coming in the west, clearly, and we have growth coming east, we think we're in pretty good shape with our properties in the west. It's hard to acquire a large piece of property in the east right now because so much of the east has been subdivided. So just a point from me before we hear your discussion. And again, this was so we all could understand how we buy it, how we sell it, and our community could understand it as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Board comments and questions? Ms. Morgan?
So two of the pieces you mentioned are environmentally sensitive. One is the Pine Island 10 acres. Is there a program where the state or federal government will, if you give them the land, or not give them the land, but you essentially make it undevelopable, that they'll pay you to, you know, keep the land undeveloped in perpetuity? That's one question. The comment I want to make about Towers, I don't think most people are familiar with the Tower site. We, that was originally acquired long before I was on the school board, but I learned this when we were trying to build the high school in Benita. The Tower Road site was originally for a bus depot. Then we tried to put a high school there, and there was incredible community outrage over the fact that we were going to build on wetlands. And the fact is, it is wetlands, and it's not, it's not, it's not usable for commercial or residential. It's only usable for public use, governmental use. So the school district was able to buy it, but fundamentally, if we try to do anything with it, we're going to run into significant community opposition based on our previous experience. So I just, I just wanted to throw those two out there. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Juvenal.
Thank you for the presentation. I think it was great to get caught up because we haven't had one of these in a while. I think it's really important. We did have a lot of these properties listed for sale recently, actually. And one, one is specific is the one in Tanglewood. That was listed with a brokerage and has not sold, and it's just a, it happens to be in my neighborhood. So it's just a simple residential lot that, if you throw it on MLS, I'm sure it would have sold in the last, especially in this heated market that we've had recently. It's kind of chilled a little bit, but people are still needing property, and God's not making it anymore, as Dr. Bernier just said. So I would agree with him regarding, you know, just selling off properties. But I mean, a simple lot like that, we had a couple in Cape Coral, and we sold those off that was listed at the same time this was. So I think it's really important that, that we do look at these properties and see what's suitable, but simple lots. And if I'm not mistaken, the Keo Costa lot was, somebody died and inherited it. We inherited it that way. It was willed to us. So, and I don't really know who or what that was, but, and I would be curious to see if it's not wetlands now because I think that's where the I came in over, that's where Ian came in. So I would be curious on that one because it might be really wet now, what's left of it, if it hasn't washed away. But, so I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. I think it was really important that we talk about it, and I think we need to talk about how, how to move forward and what we're going to do as far as a brokerage that makes sure that it represents our best interests. Thank you.
Mr. Persons?
Yeah, in the east zone, and the superintendent mentioned it, there's a lot of development scheduled along North River Road, and Babcock's going to grow further south into Lee County. So just keep your eyes open for any kind of school there. There's no high school on that side of the river until you get all the way to Norfolk Myers High. So there's a lot of area there. Plus, the elementary schools are getting sort of full and things. So just keep an eye out. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Juvenal?
And to piggyback off of that, Mr. Persons, there's no middle school over there either. And that is, I mean, the, my friends, they have, their children travel very far to go to Harons Marsh, and I, that's a long bus ride that I would love to see a middle school over there. So I would be really loving to hear you find some property for a middle school. Thank you.
Okay. I want to leave this one comment maybe for the board and the superintendent for the future as we look at some of this land. And I really appreciate this presentation. It was very insightful. So is when we're looking at it, maybe, you know, future-wise, specifically if we're starting to go through K-38s, how is this land affected if we go through K-38 models on that, just as a thought for future of us when we come up with discussion? So thank you so much for the presentation. I appreciate it.
Next up, we have...
The good news, Mr. Chair, is you're only one member of the team left. The rest of them are here and prepared to provide you what the team has taken from your last discussion regarding Hector A. Cafareta, and provides you some thoughts about the future direction for the replacement of that school building.
Thank you, Superintendent Bernier, Chair Fisher, Assistant, or Co-Chair Fisher, right? Vice Chair Fisher. Today, what we have before you is a refinement of what was originally referred to as Option C, which was to build a new K-8 campus to house Hector Cafareta at a site that is in close proximity to the existing site. You had some questions about that option. We will be hopefully answering some of those questions through, through this, and this will lead to an action item at a future board meeting. Next slide, please. So again, today's purpose is to review the K-8 option in greater detail on the site located at Northwest 20th Avenue and Northwest First Terrace. We'll go over the hurricane, impact of Hurricane Ian. Once again, I'll try to keep that brief, as well as the existing use of the site at 360 Santa Barbara Boulevard, what the proposed K-8 campus entails, as well as what a single-phase approach and a multi-phase approach may look like at this campus. If you recall, at the last meeting, you asked us specifically to look into those options, so we've brought back some cost implications as well as logistic implications of pursuing those different options. And finally, we'll, we'll give you a summary with the total construction cost. Obviously, the, at the risk of sounding being repetitive, Hector A. Cafareta sustained significant damage to the hurricane. We had catastrophic failure of the roof system, which essentially peeled back the roof, leaving it exposed to torrential rains for over a period of 12 to 14 hours, completely soaked the inside of the building. So I know you've heard me talk extensively about storm surge versus rain damage. I would prefer to have storm surge damage because gravity keeps water at the base level. This essentially permeated the roof and soaked through the entire building, causing extensive damage. We did mobilize national contractors to remediate that damage to prevent the building from further decay while we... decay while we understood our options. Part of that process was to do due diligence and retain an architecture firm with their consultants, their mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and structural consultants to evaluate the building and tell us how extensively the building had been damaged. Those assessments came back and indicated that the damage far exceeded the 50% rule where we could start to consider, should we replace this building? If you recall, when we brought our options forward, one of the options was to simply fix the building as it was. You looked at those numbers, you decided, no, we should explore a new campus in greater detail. In the interim, it was very important that we kept this community of learners together, and we stood up a portable campus immediately adjacent to this site behind Cape Coral Technical College. I believe you heard that earlier in this present, earlier today in the Cape Coral Tech presentation. So those students are currently in a portable campus immediately adjacent to this site and learning each and every day. So moving forward with Option C or the proposed K-8, we need to talk about what would happen to the existing site. So the existing building needs to be demolished. If we are not going to renovate that building, that building becomes a liability to us. So it is approximately $3 million in cost to demolish that building and grade the site down to the pad. That requires approval from the Florida Department of Education. We've reached out and received that approval. So you may recall from previous presentations that the Florida Department of Education sent down site inspectors almost immediately after Hurricane Ian, and they went through all of our buildings, this being one of them, and gave us a presentation and said, if you are considering demoing any buildings, we will expedite the castality process for you. They in fact held true to that. We sent an email, and within three days, we had approval from the state, which I understand. I've never personally gone through the castality process, but I understand that that is record time. And we do indeed have approval from the Florida Department of Education to demo the building if we so choose. Our recommendation is that we hold that piece of land for future school district use. And there's a number of uses that it could be used for. I won't speculate today what those might be, but it is a valuable piece of property that could be used for beneficial use of the district. Of course, once we exit the portable campus and move the students into this K-8 campus, we would be restoring the area that was previously water retention behind Cape Coral Tech back to water retention. Next slide, please. So we've shown you this piece of property in the last presentation. We didn't have it as developed. We've since done a greater test fit with all the accoutrements that a K-8 would have, parking lots and bus lanes and fields and tracks and sports courts. And you can see that all of that fits nicely on the site. So this is still a feasible site to do this type of work. This also allows us to do a couple of things. It replaces the elementary school seats that were lost during Hurricane Ian at Hector Cafareta. It also supplies us with a number of middle school seats that are in demand in this particular area of the district. So kind of taking a tragic situation and making the best of it as we move forward. So our goal here is to position the district in the best long-term position to meet, not only replace the capacity that was lost, but start to meet some of the long-term needs of the district. Site proximity is approximately 3.3 miles from the existing site, so it's in close proximity, and it's approximately a nine-minute drive. We've given you a map here that you, again, you've seen this map before, but we wanted to refresh your memories on how close the site actually is to the existing campus. So as part of the feedback we received at the last presentation, you specifically asked, well, what if we built the elementary school seats first, and we moved those students out of the portable campus and into the school? And that would certainly help us avoid some portable costs. Those portables that we have behind Cape Coral Tech are on a lease agreement. We pay monthly to maintain that lease agreement. If we were able to exit those portables sooner, obviously, we'd have lease agreement savings. However, as you'll see in the next slide, that's more than offset by the additional construction costs. So a single-phase approach is the most efficient delivery. It means that the construction site is a construction site during the entire duration, that we're not trying to build something, stop construction, move students in, and continue to build on the site. That has an estimated cost currently of $103.5 million and a timeline of approximately 25 months. And that timeline is shorter than it would be in a typical K-8 development for a number of reasons. We currently own the plans for this school. So while we do not have to pay to have the plans developed and take the time to have those plans developed, we will incur cost to have site design developed, right? These plans weren't developed for this particular site. It also allows us to utilize some steel that was previously purchased for a previous project. So in our opinion, staff's opinion, after having the opportunity to look at this closer, we believe that the single-phase approach is most appropriate and cost-effective for the district. However, when we look at a multi-phased approach, as you asked us to, we wanted to give you kind of the pros and cons. What does this really mean? So a multi-phase approach would allow us to move students sooner. And in the next slide, I'm going to show you some Gantt charts that show total project duration. But due to the fact that the total project duration extends in a multi-phase approach, there's additional costs for a number of reasons. You are mobilizing trades multiple times. So for example, if the steel subcontractor is onsite, and they're focused on opening up the elementary portion of the building first, they're going to mobilize, do their work, then they're going to demobilize and not come back until it's ready to build the six-through-eight portion. So we have another immobilization fee. We also have the risk of material price increases, and as we know, those have been quite severe over the last several years. We increased the duration of construction approximately six months to accommodate that multi-phased approach, which means six more months of supervision from the construction manager risk, as well as other costing creates that can happen over that six months. And most importantly, it creates a safety and security issue. Anytime you have an active construction site and students immediately adjacent, that is a concern that you must work with. Now, not atypical, there are a lot of K-12 construction sites around the country, especially replacement schools, where they will build the new school on the field, keep the students in the campus, and move the students. So it's not an insurmountable situation. It just is a point for knowledge. We need to be aware that that's something we have to address if we choose to go with the multi-phase approach. Now, looking at the duration, while the multi-phase approach takes a longer duration, I've added this red line. That red line is essentially the time at which we would be able to move the K-5 students into the campus. So you can see, that's approximately six months before we would be able to move them if we did a single-phase approach. So there are some advantages to it. We get those students into that permanent building sooner. I don't, and this is really for you to weigh at the end of the day, my opinion is that does not outweigh the additional costs and security issues and potential pitfalls of doing a multi-phase project. So, construction cost summary. As you can see, the base cost to build the building is essentially the same. Where we see the deviations is approximately $12.5 million in additional cost to phase the project, offset by $3.1 million in lease savings. We still come out with a $103 million project versus a $112 million project in a multi-phased approach. With that, I'll be happy to turn the conversation over to the superintendent and answer any questions you may have.
Board members will look forward to hearing your discussion.
Okay. Comments and questions? Ms. Juvenelli?
I just actually have a couple regarding what of these costs would FEMA reimburse us for? Like, and my question was regarding the demoing, the $3 million to demo, but would that be covered at all? Or, I was just curious.
We're doing all of our work related to ensuring that we have the best possible position to be reimbursed. So not only would the construction cost be called, but I just want to, I'm 99.9% sure, and I'm waiting for a nod. And the demolition would also be covered if FEMA reimburses.
Right. I mean, there's always that question, but I was just curious of this, what they would cover. Would that be all of it, though? Just the demoing? No?
So FEMA is going to cover the cost to replace what we had, and that's really vague, right? So whatever it takes to accommodate the 725 student stations that we had at the original campus. They're only going to reimburse a portion of that. There's things such as cost sharing that are involved, and there's cost reasonableness that's involved. But what is eligible is the applicant through a public assistance grant can apply to be reimbursed to essentially be made whole. So they will not cover the entire cost of a K-8 project, because we are essentially adding additional capacity to the district. However, in working with our consultants, this was what would fall under what's called an alternative project. There's nothing in FEMA's public assistance grant information that says you must rebuild that property, that size, at that location.
Great. Thanks for that, because I was just curious if we'd be penalized for changing to K-3e or, you know, but it makes sense what you said. Those, thank you.
Okay. Who was next? Ms. Patrica?
I continue to think that this is one of the best ideas that I've come across in my six-plus years on the board. I thank you very much for bringing it forward. I am disappointed. I really loved Mrs. Langford Fleming's idea of a phased build, and I just don't think it makes sense based on the numbers. But you have my, I mean, I'll go on record saying I support and would vote yes for this. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I would support the single-phase one, even though it's a little bit longer, it just makes more sense to me. Thank you.
Mr. Persons?
And I think the consensus probably is going to be we want to go with this direction. I was just wondering how soon we could get it brought before the board for an official vote.
That makes sense for you all also. I think tonight would be a little impossible, if not irresponsible, but we can move with all deliberate speed. I'm trying to go through my calendars in the head, as long as you are open to a good cause item. There's still some additional work to be done to ensure that what you're actually approving are the actual costs, but we can move with all deliberate speed on this particular project.
Any other comments and questions before I go ahead? Ms. Langford Fleming?
I'll just go on record saying I would completely support a good cause item this evening and, or, you know, as soon as possible, excuse me. But the single-phase demo current news site, even though getting the students in six months earlier, I understand what you're saying about all of the hurdles that could come in the way and unforeseen hurdles. So, and obviously, we always want to save as much money as possible. But thank you for bringing both the options to the board.
Anybody else?
For me, I really think this is a great project. I appreciate the thought and time that's gone into this, excuse me. So it's, in my neck of the woods, I will say that the community, whether it's, you know, teachers and students and officials in the area, everyone is very excited for this project. So I think it's a great thing. The only one thing I wanted to bring up, just as kind of a note, and maybe this is more of an offline thing with the superintendent, just kind of wanted to see if we could talk a little bit. I know the concern with any elementary or middle school these days is just some of the traffic around, obviously. I mean, I know it's a little bit within residential here, but just how, you know, the car lines and stuff are going to flow, just as kind of maybe an offline thing for the Mr. Superintendent.
Prior to building or prior to us coming to the board, we would put something together within our program and in our operational cost for a traffic study. That then gives us the ability to plan during the construction phase to mitigate as much of the traffic as possible. So that is part of how we build. Let me be clear, though, the traffic study would not be done prior to coming to you for approval.
I understand that. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And real quick, thank you as well to Principal Kurtz over here. So I know he's done a great job with many, many, many issues before him at Hector, and I appreciate that, and been able to visit a couple times, and they're doing a great job under there under the circumstances. And I'm excited to, you know, that we'll all be able to get them a school sooner than later. So, thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Good afternoon, board members. There are no public comments.
Thank you. Moving on to final item, which would be good of the order in any board comment, I will start with Ms. Morgan.
So I have a comment about the Southwest Florida Symphony with the elementary students that I went to, I think it was last week. They brought in, I think, half of the third, fourth, and fifth graders for one hour, and then brought in another half of third, fourth, and fifth grade. It was unbelievable, the number of kids they had at Fort Myers High School. And it was really well done by the Southwest Florida Orchestra or Symphony. But I have a suggestion. As I was sitting in the audience and listening to the presentation and how they were introducing the instruments to the students and trying to show, hold up a French horn and try to explain to students all the way in the back how somebody puts their lips on the French horn and how they play it, you know, that doesn't... So I was thinking, it would be really great if, going forward, if we were to continue to partner with the symphony, if someone could do graphics, make essentially a multimedia presentation, do graphics that show the kids in a very immediate way what it is that the orchestra members are talking about. Because I think kids were interested, but they couldn't, you know, they couldn't see or process what was being said. So it's just, and I recognize you'd probably need a grant to fund an intern or someone to do something like that. However, I'm just, you know, I thought it was a terrific way to introduce these kids, particularly as they're thinking about what instruments they're going to play or maybe take on as they, you know, move through their elementary years. Anyway, that's my only comment for this evening, or this afternoon. Thank you.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
I just wanted to say thank you to all the elementary schools and middle schools that I was invited to, to read for Dr. Seuss Week. What a great job. It's always fun to go back to the K-through-fives and read a little One Fish, Two Fish, Blue Fish, Red Fish. So thank you for the invitation, and what a great job the elementary schools did with that throughout the district. Also, congratulations again to the student gas bar at South Fort Myers High School, receiving his Level 1 Masonry. I believe they had another student very soon going to be completing that, and maybe a dozen or so that are on the same track for that. So what a great job the principal and Mr. Myers, the masonry teacher, is doing over there. We could use a couple of him in the district. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Persons?
I'll save mine for tonight.
Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I would just ask if you all will please look at what Dr. Carlin had sent to us. It was regarding the state and Senate and House appropriations, what we have asked for from them, and also the projects, the member projects and the Hurricane Ian progress report. And she had sent the addresses to us as well for each and every one of the House and Senate. So if we could send those to them, thank them in advance, just put a good word in and really appreciate what they're doing, so that way it's better for us. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
So that you don't have to listen to me tonight, I'm going to go through my report now. District Advisory Council was phenomenal, I thought. We had a little bit of difficulty with technology, and I couldn't hear all of what high school had to say. They kept getting kicked out of the Zoom meeting. So I didn't spend a lot of time in high school, but there were common themes. They took a deep dive into the student code of conduct, and there were themes across the grade levels, which is rare. And one of the themes was, where does our authority with regard to disciplining children begin and end? Is it front door of the home to school and then back to front door of the home, or is it from the school bus to the school bus? What are we doing, what, if anything, can we do about children using technology outside of school hours to do bad things, either to each other or whatever? Those were common themes that were even raised in elementary school, which was surprising to me, because we've not seen things like that before. Anyways, I know staff took really good notes, and I am really excited to see what staff brings forward to us in terms of a final product, given the feedback they got from the District Advisory Council. I think it was last night or the night before, I can't remember which night, I had my executive District Advisory Council meeting where we finalized a presentation on Naviance and Bright Future scholarships for our next DAC meeting. I love that the, what's that thing we talked about earlier today? Strategic Plan Refresh will make a stop... will make a stop at DAC. DAC has become really good at providing actionable feedback. And I love that DAC will be involved in that process. And my final update is I did have an FHSAA meeting last weekend or the weekend before. And I am, I have two FHSAA meetings left before I term off of that board. And rather, I'm not really going to say much about the meeting or what's going on with FHSAA because what I have to say might harm our lobbying efforts. So I will say those are my comments for today. Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Thank you. I'll be real quick, too. I just wanted to say how much fun I had Read Across America at Pelican. I went reading in actually three kindergarten classrooms. And they asked more questions than I've ever had before when I was reading, which I thought was really interesting. My one book that should have taken just, you know, five, 10 minutes, probably take, took me about 15, 20, because they had a lot of questions. So I thought that was interesting that they were that curious. But also, I just wanted to say safe travels next week when we go to Tallahassee. I know we're all going there to work for the, our district and advocate for us. And then I just wanted to mention the Golden Apple reception that we had a couple, was it a couple Fridays ago? And that was actually really nice. And, because I'm not going to be able to attend the actual banquet gala. So I just wanted to acknowledge all the, the winners and congratulate them. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I would just like to clarify that when I said "our" lobbying efforts, I meant FHSAA lobbying efforts, not School District of Leek County lobbying efforts.
Noted for the record.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave most of my comments for tonight as well. I had a great time as well at Read Across America. I read at Hector Cafareta, as well as Trafalgar Elementary. Had a great time there. Had some really interesting comments on careers, including somebody that wanted to become an astronaut so they could steal the moon. I thought that was very creative. So, but that's all my comments for now. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything?
Just to let you know that the delegation all received, as far as I can tell from some of the photos that have been sent, the delegation has all received a small little bund cake from Nothing Bund Cakes on your behalf. I have pictures of the members of our delegation enjoying their small treat. And I want the public to know that there were no public tax dollars spent on that. Your superintendent just took care of that because it's the right thing to do. So we gave them a little treat in order to feed them prior to their session beginning.
Attorney DePree Bruno?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I think that student story was in, in reference to a movie many kids have seen, including myself. So, but we will have a student performance tonight at 5:45 PM, followed by our action meeting at 6 o'clock. Seeing no other business to come before this, board, this meeting is adjourned at 4:08 PM. Thank you.